You back live, John? Okay. All right, I think we've got everybody back in. So we'll move on to 2.2, Presentation of the April 2022 Overland Flood and Risk Evaluation. You got that pulled up, Mr. Grasser?
Here we go. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. This is a quick review. Remember, we had quite a couple of rain events here in April. We had quite a bit of flooding that was going on in the surrounding area and also through the city. Enough that it raised some of my concerns about how are we going to be able to handle some of these flood events when they come in. You know, the rain event we had was about three inches of rain. The response we saw of the runoff was concerning and because, you know, our 100-year rain here is like six inches or better. And so it makes you start to wonder, you know, how do we handle events like that? So this is a quick, general layout of the area. Generally, overland flooding, drainage, I should say, in our area comes basically from the southwest to the northeast. So this area kind of represents the general area of drainage. In the city, our main areas that receive the drainage is the south end drainway here. There's a couple of lakes here that go out to the river in the English Cooley, which also ties into legal drain nine. We also have now, you've maybe heard about the diversions, we have an English Cooley diversion channel out here. Purpose of that is to intercept the overland flows as they come into the community because when the river is high, as it recently was, we actually have to shut the gates to keep the water from backing into the city and we have to turn on the pumps. And so pumps have much less capacity than, you know, the open culverts. Also make a mention in here, legal drain four kind of runs along Merrifield Road. That's another major drain in the area. Just kind of as a, you know, the drainage goes generally from southwest to northeast, but it doesn't follow a straight line. It basically hit, goes through the section lines. And this is the depiction, so what happens here when some of this water accumulates, say, on a section like this, it goes through the available culverts. And I know in this particular area, we have a culvert going north and a culvert going east. That's generally the direction the water gets diverted to. If it goes too far north, it ends up in the English Cooley. Goes too far east, it ends up in the south end drainway. There's a couple of blue dots in here, just kind of remember generally where those are. That'll come up later in the presentation, just as a visual. And I'll tell you where I'm going with this thing is, in the end, I want to show some of the photos and stuff that I've seen. And I'd like to move ahead at some point in time in the near future, come in with RFQ, go out for professional services, because I think this area really needs to be studied. We need to find out where some of this water is actually ending up. Is it ending up here? Or is it ending up here? Or is it ending up here? Makes a big difference where they show up. So with that, I'll try to be quick, bounce through the slides. We talk sometimes about the diversion structure and the gates. Again, this is just a picture of it. This wasn't at the peak flow. But water comes down the diversion channels. It overflows the small weir here and it goes north through the diversion. These are the gates sometimes we talk about. It's a gated structure. This is basically at 17th Avenue South and 69th Street, a couple miles west of town. And so right now, today, those gates are closed because we're keeping that water from coming into town because we don't want to pump it. Can't pump it.
Just one quick question on that one. That was probably one of my questions. That's a weir there, and so a certain amount of flow was forced through town and a certain part of flow was around town?
The way it's set up to operate, remember, Flood Control Project is supposed to take away damaging flows but not interfere with the natural flow of the system. So this weir, you can see there's a, it's not all the way to the bottom. There's weir there. The idea is that the base flows in here would go through these gates and into town because you want to maintain that flow in the English Cooley to maintain flow and freshness and those kinds of activities. So it's not, it's only made to take those damaging flows that might otherwise be excessive, if that makes sense. And again, the primary thing is we have to shut these off to keep from pumping it. This would be a lot of water to pump. Doesn't look like much, but if you tried to run it through some pumps, it would be a lot of water. So this kind of went on, this was Saturday morning of the flood event, driving around trying to get a sense of what was going on in the system. We were receiving calls. So this is an example of, this is on 42nd Street looking west. This is basically kind of the beginning of the English Cooley as it, you know, comes through town. Technically, that's pieces of legal drain yet, but you can see how deep the water is. Lot of water coming through there, lots. This is very close to where you're at, Councilman Vien. This is on 34th Street. This happens to be looking east. Again, you can see, get a sense of the amount of water out there. Box culverts in here, you can't quite see it, but water was basically all the way to, you know, top of the box culvert. So the system was really full. Again, kind of moving through here, this is at University Avenue, looking south, near the Chester Fritz and President's Home. Again, lot of water out there. And again, that was only a three-inch rain event. This is that Gateway Drive looking east. These are the culverts that go on the Gateway Drive. Again, you can see how deep the water is. You can't really see it through the tree very well, but there's a lot of water that was backing up even going east. This is that same shot kind of looking south. There's a subdivision right here. And again, you can get a sense of how deep the water is and, you know, the channel is way back in here someplace. This is another one, again, just as the English Cooley crosses Highway 81, it's on its way to the pumping station. What I found interesting is, once we got through town, the amount of water that was actually, the ponding water, was much less observable here. If you look at it, it's kind of, it's going through the culvert and it's going through pretty good. It's not, you're not having a huge amount of backup. There's a couple of shots of the south end drainway. These weren't taken at the peak of the crest, but it just gives you an idea. These are the normal openings through the south end drainway that the water carries through. Again, during a flood, those gates are shut. This pumping station over here then has to pump the water out of the drainway and onto the river. This is kind of on the riverside of the levee, so to speak. This is where one of the blue dots were. I want to show, so what happens, that water was working its way, you know, north and east and into town. And so what happens is this stuff starts to accumulate in these sections. Each section, to a degree, is kind of metered by the culverts that are in there. And anyway, so this is a section of land. You can see the amount of water that we're dealing with. There's a lot of water out there. It's a good thing that all didn't end up, you know, coming through town. This is roughly the same location. It's looking east. You can see here where we've got culverts that are now taking the water into the interstate ditch. It's going through another culvert that you can't really see, crossing the interstate, crossing another culvert, and it's heading east into town. This ends up basically around the Columbia Road area. There's a ditch check in here that's kind of pushing the water that way. But again, on much larger events, the water, I think, will exceed. It'll come over the top of those ditch checks and it'll come into town. This is 69th in town, looking back. Again, you can just see all the water ponding in the fields. There's a lot of water out there that we need to figure out how to deal with. Again, it was, we pushed a lot of our systems close to the max on that three-inch range, so I'm concerned what happens when we get a larger event. Maybe at that point, I will just stop, see if there's any questions on. I want to make it just very brief, but kind of a heads up that I would like to be coming back and looking for services to explore this in much more detail.
Mr. Weber? This is all discussed overland. What about groundwater as well?
Groundwater is going to be more of a local issue. This, that isn't something, that's something, most people that deal with the groundwater, it's because of the rain around your house, basically, right? And this, what this does is we divert the water away from town. It keeps from further saturating additional ground, but it's not as direct a connection as the overland actual flow is.
Mr. Vien?
Mr. Grasser, did you get a chance to look at the first diversion, English Cooley diversion, and how full that was?
I did, but I didn't get out there until several days later. It was flowing pretty full, but not super excessive. I've seen it very, very excessive. The fall rains we had here about four years ago, the water almost flowed over the dry dam, over the emergency spillway. When that happens, everybody downstream is going to have a bad day. That's a different issue that, you know, we're not really able to address at this point in time. But the diversion, we maybe confuse people. So back in the 70s, they built a diversion west of town in addition to a dry dam to retain the water and then route it around town. That diversion is farther away from town than the one that we just got done talking about. So there's actually two diversions for the city, the farther rural one and then the one that I talked about here that's closer to town. One closer to town is directly linked to our flood protection project. Last quick slide, just information, or this is a part of our survey group in here. When the river crests, we take shots up and down the river. Just kind of interesting to see where this event ended up here relative to the obelisk. And again, just generally kind of see how the river, you know, got in relationship to the Sorley Bridge. You can actually see by the water marks here, the water was a little higher than when this photo. And so that's all I have. There aren't any other questions.
Quick question for you on the cleanup. How long does Kim Greendahl help out with that? What's the timeline to get that cleaned up down there once it recedes?
I don't know that I can speak to that. I know they're kind of cleaning, you're just talking the river. They're kind of cleaning things up as they go, but the river is still, I think some of those areas are still underwater yet. Water's still pretty high. I think we just opened up one of the last gates today.
Any more questions from Mr. Grasser? All right, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item 2.3, we have a few proclamations. I'll read off here quickly. We got National Police Week, I'll just do them in order here. National Police Week, May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as well as Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15th, which would have been yesterday. When the Congress and, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week, which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Grand Forks Police Department and area law enforcement play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms in our community, whereas it is important that all the citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, whereas the men and women of the Grand Forks Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Mayor Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, call upon the citizens of Grand Forks and upon all patriotic civic educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th, 2022, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving rights and security of all system, all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Grand Forks to observe May 15th, 2022, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, in honor of these law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service to their community and have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all, of all our fallen heroes. Next proclamation, obviously, very close to home, I can't believe it's been coming up on two years, but this is the anniversary of the end of watch, Officer Cody N. Holtie, May 27, 2022. Whereas on May 27, 2022, Grand Forks Police Officer Cody N. Holtie responded to Grand Forks County Sheriff's Deputy Call for assistance after they had been fired upon by a heavily armed suspect within an apartment building. And whereas Police Officer Cody N. Holtie entered the threat area to assist Grand Forks County Sheriff Deputies and was struck multiple times by the suspect's gunfire. Whereas Police Officer Cody N. Holtie was killed in the line of duty as he succumbed to his injuries on May 27, 2020. Now therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, direct all flags on city-owned property to be lowered half-staff and encourage and request all flags throughout the Grand Forks community to be lowered half-staff in honor of Grand Forks Police Officer Cody N. Holtie, who made the ultimate sacrifice in service of the city of Grand Forks. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen hero, Officer Cody N. Holtie. All right, the other two are filed on there. We're going to move on. I think that's the one we can end on. Item 3, Public Hearings and Second Reading of Ordinances. 3.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances dedicated to the right-of-way on plot of Peony re-subdivision, 3527th Avenue North. Mr. Brooks?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the plot which essentially divides up the property. And we've been before you last time. I know this next item, too, will be related to it. That's the zoning, but for this one, it's, this is just the splitting of the property and staff has been in approval on that. And there hasn't been any changes since the last meeting. I'll stand for any questions.
All right, why don't we open the public hearing first and we'll open up the questions. So anybody here to speak on item 3.1? Now would be your chance. All right, public hearing period's closed. Any comments by council? Motion to approve by President Sandy. Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Kevami. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances amending the zoning map to include Peony PUD, Planned Unit Development located at 3527th Avenue North. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I know that this one, we've certainly made a few changes since last time. One of the, one of the big ones was narrowing the uses that were defined on the PUD, the Planned Unit Development. The uses were changed specifically to call it the Corn Wet Milling Facility, bio-fermentation processes, combined heat and water power plant, water treatment, finishing project, warehousing, and load-out grain receiving and storage and supporting uses. Storage of hazardous and non-hazardous materials shall be in accordance with the Uniform Fire Code and land application of biosolids is prohibited. So that wording, as requested last time, to narrowly, more narrowly define that, that was the reason that we went through and did that. I can certainly go through the full presentation as I did last time. If somebody's looking for more information, I have that available, or I could stand for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. I think we'll start with a public hearing. So right now, the floor is open for anyone wishing to speak on item 3.2. Mr. Madacek, please.
Frank Madacek, 4150 Columbia Road North. I talked a little bit about the PUD before, and over 30 years on planning and zoning, I've seen quite a few PUDs. I would like you to consider maybe tabling this or taking another look at this PUD, because I still don't think, I want to commend Mr. Brooks, he did put some more stuff in this since the first PUD I saw, which was nothing more than a blob of a factory in the middle of a piece of 370 acres. There are some more things, access and stuff. But I think it's important that this PUD, with that big a piece of property, you need to know everything that's going to happen on that piece of property, what's going to happen on those lots. I understand it's, I too, and I understand all that. But all the plots I've seen, there's been accesses, there's been right-of-ways, there's been utilities. Mr. Grasser, Mr. Brooks, they usually take these PUDs and they have all kinds of stuff that's put in this, even a smaller one. You're going to have another one tonight, the, I think it's Grand Valley. What's the one that Community Contractors is doing?
It's in the forest.
It's in the forest. But take a look at that PUD. They just want another access and look at all the stuff they have to go through to do that. So all I'm asking you to do, if you're going to do due diligence on this PUD, take a good look at it. Maybe if nothing else, just table it, go over it again. Make sure you got all the information, because I don't think you do. Or maybe you do, I don't know. And I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. When you went down to try to get funds for the natural gas line, you testified in Bismarck that you needed the natural gas line for Phase 2 of Fu Fang. What's Phase 2? I know what Phase 1 is, the Corn Wet Milling Plant, but you testified in that thing that you needed it for Phase 2 of Fu Fang.
Oh, that's incorrect.
I got the minutes, I can show it to you.
Well, you can show it to me. The gas needed to be for any phase, we don't have enough. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. You asked me a question, I'm going to answer it.
Sure.
We don't have enough gas in the city of Grand Forks to have any expansion, Phase 1 or Phase 2, so it doesn't really matter.
I don't disagree with that. What I want to know is what's Phase 2 of Fu Fang?
We don't know. They've had one phase, they talked about expansion in the future. Right now, they're only focused on getting this.
You just happened to mention it in your testimony, and I was just curious if you knew what it was or what it was, because it says Fu Fang Phase 2.
Oh, I just told you, they've got one phase right now.
That's fine. I asked a lot of questions and I'm always told we get all the answers. Well, we don't always get the answers, but that's fine. I just want to, I want to be very clear about this. This is a very big project. You guys are going to be on the hook for this. You ought to know what the heck's going on on that whole 370 acres, because I sure would like to know. And everybody in this room would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if anybody wants to speak on this item, just come up. We've got the citizen, they're for different items, so if you've got, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Beclair. If anyone wants to file in after, Mr. Beclair.
Sean Beclair, Stephen Moon Sora, like to speak to the due diligence aspect of it and being a neighbor to a corn wet mill. And I guess I asked before at Planning and Zoning Committee, how many of you have actually physically walked through a corn wet mill plant? I see a raise of hands. One hand, two. My experience, right, so I've been an owner plus 20-plus years, been dozen-plus times to Wapton, North Dakota, spoke with those people 50-plus times regarding an order. There's no way that I would want a corn wet mill within a half a mile of an existing facility. The order is present, it's constant, and it just amazes me that you haven't, for example, I'm obviously biased, the people at Fu Fang are biased. To me, part of due diligence, you know who obviously is your contact that you haven't? North Dakota Department Environmental Quality. Wonderful people, great. Not only do they manage all the ag processing plants in the state, they can contact, I believe there's probably eight other states that have corn wet mills, environmental quality. And I would strongly suggest you get their input, right? They want to have their home or businesses located to a nesting corn wet mill plant like your proposal. That's all I have. Due diligence, talk to somebody who's unbiased, qualified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beclair. Dr. Barber, please.
Fellow, not fellow, but council members, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak to you today. I just have a few anecdotes. I don't think I'll sway anyone's opinion, but I thought it might be enlightening for me to share luncheon that I happened to sit at last week. I had the serendipitous, unexpected opportunity to be next to a female mechanical engineer who had worked in a refinery in Houston, which blew up, and her husband was also employed there, and he's also equally brilliant, much more brilliant than myself. But I bring it up because, sorry, it's very difficult, it was very diff, she's still suffering from PTSD about 17 years later, unable to work. Someone left a, some lever open, the petroleum leaked and boom, man in charge ended up killing himself, and terrible story. Anyway, point is, with these types of extremely complex, dangerous scientific plants, it is, to reinforce points that have already been made, so important that you are afforded the respect of having a detailed scientific plan laid out for you in advance of these things going forward. Having practiced in biochemistry, which is very different than setting a plant in the mechanical aspects of it, the building aspects of it, I fail to understand how anything that I've seen so far is sufficiently in scientific detail to present any kind of a rigorous plan for anything, anywhere, anytime, especially in this country. Okay? I am genuinely fearful of, for all of us as a community, I think it's extremely disrespectful that you all don't have the answers to questions that you should have the answers to by now. These people have built six of these plants in, this company has built six of these plants in China. There is no excuse to not have more detailed plans at this stage. Secondly, this new friend of mine also enlightened me that when their company formed a partnership with China, she rolled her eyes and said, "They steal everything. They steal all your intellectual property. They say that one thing, one minute, the next minute, all your intellectual property is stolen, replicated, profited from, and you get nothing." And this is a story that we have heard multiple times in multiple different industries all over this country. Smithfield Foods is one of the largest examples. Third point I'd like to make today is that I'm extremely fortunate to have attended the School of Hard Knocks, and I'm the product of very inventive people from North Dakota, both on both sides of my family. My great-grandparents from Edgley gave birth to my grandfather, who bought the house here in Grand Forks. He was a mechanic during the day and he built motors for fun and engineered buildings for fun when he wasn't working his day job. So the theft of intellectual property goes very deep with me. On the other side of my family, when my other set of great-grandparents came here from Northern Ireland, their son built a gate from his bare hands, as everybody in Northwest North Dakota did. If you couldn't do that, you couldn't live there, because nobody asked anybody for help. If they couldn't do it themselves, it just didn't get done. And that's what I am used to, what I have been used to in North Dakota. And that is why I have been able to restore the house here in Grand Forks. And I bring that up not just to pass the time and amuse you, but to hopefully have you think very deeply about these issues that are going to affect our community very deeply for a very long time. And I have yet to meet an American who is, that I know of, who is so jaded that they will just steal intellectual property. Except Bill Gates did say, who is such good friends with the Chinese now, he did say about 20-odd years ago, "There's no such thing as ownership of an idea," or words to that effect. Meaning that you can tell Bill anything and he'll steal it from you. This is the man who founded Microsoft, which no doubt has thousands of patents, and he's good with anybody stealing anybody else's intellectual property. And so, anyway, I'll leave you with that. I'm sure my time has expired, but I'm grateful for the efforts you're making. I ask that you afford yourselves the self-respect to require rigorous plans from these people who have a terrible, terrible track record of theft of intellectual property, of building dangerous structures, of poisoning people, and of generally having nefarious motives for anything that have to do with America. Thank you very much.
Further comments on item 3.2? Mr. Coachman, please.
Hello. How's everybody doing tonight? Okay, I'm doing fine. I had a couple of emails that were sent to the auditor and to you, Mr. Gotts, and you haven't returned any of my emails yet. But this was for the auditor, if you ever will respond back, please, somebody get this information to her. The question I had that was sent over a couple of weeks ago was pretty much, how many people ago was pretty much, "How many people work in your office? Do your office validate petitions? Does your office have the manpower to validate the petitions? And who authorized your office not to validate those Fufang petitions?" In other words, why was it sent to Mr. Gostad? So my other question is pretty much to Mr. Gostad was, "Did your law firm or at any time represent Fufang?" And the reason why I say that, if there was a timeframe, and who in your office did work that, because I believe that's a conflict of interest, which I'm finding on the North Dakota Supreme Court, that you and your office have multiple conflict of interests representing the city and other entities. My other question is, who informed you to validate the Fufang petition, or did you take it on your own initiative? Did they indicate that when you had the law enforcement work for you, harm any law enforcement? Did they present themselves as law enforcements when they were calling people to validate them? And why didn't you have other people hired to validate the petitions? My other question, who pays for these law enforcement? Does your law firm, the city, or do you bill the city and pay the law enforcement? Who requested the law enforcement to work for you? How'd you get that authority? And my last other question is, on the petition, and I ask you this, is can the county have a petition voting on Fufang? Since the county's been annexed, why can't the county be brought in? What century code, what city code, if any, says yes or no, as far as the county? Which brings up another question, is why can't the city and county both have a combined petition? Why or why not? So if you could get those answers back to me, if you look around the 3rd, the 3rd of May is when I email those questions to you, I would deep appreciate it if you email them back to me. Thank you. State Council.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. Mr. Madachak, please.
I'll make it quick. I just want to make one comment. I fully understand that I don't always remember what I said yesterday, and you probably didn't either, but this is a copy of the testimony on November 10th, 2021, that you gave to the House Appropriations Committee. I'd be glad to give you a copy if it refreshes your memory, but it definitely says phase two of Fufang. So that's the reason I asked.
Sure thing. Have it to Erica, she'll get it to me. Thank you.
I don't want to argue with you, but that was in the testimony that you gave, so I just, and I'm very concerned about what phase two is. I really am.
I know you are, and we appreciate that. Well, I think originally they had talked about building it in two phases, and they're building it in one now. I mean, it's not rocket science. Mr. Cadillac, please.
Thank you. You know, I'm just going to address the same thing I addressed months ago, the first time I spoke. You know, I asked, is everything going to be...
Excuse me, ma'am, if you could, Mr. Cadillac's speaking, please, Mr. Cadillac, continue.
Months ago, when I first came here, I asked if things are going to be honest and above board. And I wasn't treated very nicely. I get comments from that constantly on how I'm treated by this board. And now I'm going to not speak about any specific person, but people on this board constantly are talking about how few people here are against Fufang. We wouldn't be here if we're not against Fufang. I've been here more often than most of the council. I've been here more often than Kevin Edmonds' friends. I find it very disrespectful for people to say about all these people out on the street that comment on the positive of this. I get constant phone calls, people coming in my shop, my home, people talking to me from out of state that are against it, and they're just amazed at how this, people on this council behave. And it's really too bad, because you're making a bad name for city councilmen everywheres when you behave the way you do. And, you know, people come up and tell me all the time that they appreciate what I'm saying, they're glad for what I'm doing. And, you know, if you want to find Mr. Weber's house, it's very easy. You go by St. Mary's Church and find the block with the most anti-Fufang signs on. And his is a yellow house right across from one of them. And again, I'm going to go back to the first statement I ever made up here. Could you people please be honest and above board with your doings here? And I do not believe that's too much to ask. It would really be nice, and as of right now, it'd be a heck of a change. And even yourself, Mr. Mayor, you know, I am here way more often than you are. You people are getting paid. I have to come here to protect what I already own. You people are tearing apart a city that was established here without the help of you people. But you are being the people that are going to literally destroy it. And I take offense
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac. Anybody else on item 3.2 on the PUD? All right, the public hearing period's closed. I'll open it up for any comments from council. Mr. Veen, please.
Sure. I might start out with a couple of broad comments. I first learned about this project back in, I think, November sometime. Mayor, you called and talked to me about the project and that it was coming forward. And when I heard about the project, I put together a number of comments that were concerning, and I communicated those comments to both the mayor and to Todd. And those comments included a primary focus on infrastructure, and impacts to infrastructure. Street and highways was the first issue that I had, impacts to the ADT, truck routes, impacts to life of the streets, and impacts to the city. The rail impacts, I was really concerned about, what impacts it would have on railroad crossings, quiet zones, et cetera. Probably a focus is water. Raw water availability has been a concern. I've been working on that for a number of years. And the creation of a new utility for raw water that was brand-new for us. Wastewater, compliance with the industrial pretreatment program, lagoon. Stormwater, most specifically about how we would handle stormwater discharge, and especially during flood events. City services, including flood or fire department and those costs. Security risks, then into operational costs and a number of other things, along with the economic impacts, environmental assessments, including impacts through all the utilities that we talked about, and asking for a risk assessment. I think one of the other ones was on Northern Plains nitrogen. Before, there was a development agreement that I was aware of. I was well aware that there would be major impacts within the city, especially to city infrastructure. And so, I forwarded them. And I've had conversations a lot with Mr. Phelan lately, that almost every one of those infrastructure concerns that I had was somehow incorporated into the development agreement. Maybe not all, but a majority of them were, and of course, city staff is very capable of doing most of theirs on their own. But I did want to completely make sure that we were protecting the public infrastructure for the city of Grand Forks. And with that, I think there was one other item, let me see here. I did ask for due diligence on the research of the company's credentials and history. And I actually recommended that we do a site visit. And at that time, I'd hoped we could have done one where they have currently sites in China. I was told that with what was happening with the virus, that wasn't going to happen. But I did understand, I wanted to make sure, we knew the merit of the company, Fufang, because I had no idea who they were, especially at that time, and what their impacts would be. I've also sat in on at least one of the meetings that Mr. Phelan has had with the consultants and the city staff, as they've addressed the studies of the infrastructure that I laid out, and saw the diligence that was being done in each one of those areas to make sure that we had the proper information and studies were being addressed. And I know almost all the engineering firms that were here, and many of the individuals, I had high belief in their integrity and what they were bringing forth. I especially was concerned, and I was grateful for the studies that were being done, because they, we needed those to be able to fully address or assess impacts to us. Those studies are, some of them are probably quicker than others, they're moving fairly quick. We don't have a final answer to all of them, or maybe any of them that I know of. I know they're being diligently worked on, and they're getting close, but they're not there, I don't know the full impact of those. So that's a question that I had. I had hoped we would have the right mechanism for doing that. I'm told the development agreement is the right means for addressing that. But I also want to make sure that, from a community perspective, we are protected, whatever that we need to. We've invested a lot of money in this infrastructure, and it just needs to be protected. I think if you know anything, and I've learned a lot about wet corn milling, there's probably four things that are critically important. The first one is corn. The second one, which I think is probably the most critical, is water. The third is energy. And probably the fourth is just the physical location. And I can understand why this location was selected. It's got availability to railroad access, it's got the street and highway system, and it's got the city infrastructure to support it. That doesn't mean it's a great location for everybody, because it's awfully close. Five of my brothers, I wish we had some type of heavy industry, industrial park. We don't, and this is the preferred location. Of course, they purchased the land, and now they're trying to get it developed. And I understand, you know, the major things are the plating, the annexation, and the zoning. I mean, those are the three critical things. But I'm also being told, along with those three things, is compliance with the development agreement. And we approved the development agreement early on, because it was a way to finance the studies that we needed to do to take it to the next level. And that seemed to be the preferred mechanism to do that, and the value of that somewhat is that we could control the studies and make sure that they were thorough and met cities' requirements and needs for it. So far, from what I can tell, that's happened. We still don't have them, and I'm not for sure, I guess I haven't followed up individually about where they all are at. What it has brought to light for me was, and I mentioned the location and why that location works, and I will also mention why, what my concern is with the location, and that concern has to do amongst, well, the studies will still address that. But one that I probably didn't think about was odor, and how we could address odor. I know we've done a tremendous job of trying to, almost to a fault, engineer what their wastewater treatment plants should look like, by to a fault. I don't think we should take responsibility for their design, they need to take responsibility for their design and get the appropriate permits for it. My concern is, you could have the best permit out there, doesn't mean operationally you won't have issues and there won't be odor. And one of the things that I would like to see us take a look at, see if there's a better way to research this, is to ask that we look at a conditional use permit that can manage or look at odor. That we can put that burden back on the plant to comply, because that's what I hear much of out in the audience, or out in public, is how do we address odor? And so, that's the first thing that I think needs to be addressed, and where is the best, and how is the best way to address it. The second issue is the one that's significant to our whole community, and that is the availability of water. There's been a lot of discussions and presentations about water, the permitting of having that water available. But I will tell you this, water availability in the Red River here is far more complex than anybody here probably knows or can address. And I could go through a long list, a page long here, of where, what my concerns with water, water law, the availability of that water, how the water gets here, the water behind Bald Hill Dam, the wastewater reuse that takes along the place, along the river, the permitting that happens within the states of North Dakota and Minnesota, the ownership of water, in fact, there's all water in the state of North Dakota is owned by the state. We only can use it via permit, and what we do in times of low flow and drought, and how we use our drought mitigation plan. All those pieces come into it. And the only way to get a truly representative knowledge of that availability is through a complex modeling. And that complex modeling is currently underway. It was done as a part of the, through garrison diversion and the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, that's currently actually under construction. What I appreciate about that project, it is intended to deliver water to eastern North Dakota, actually, it's designed for half the population of the state of North Dakota, but most specifically for Fargo and Grand Forks, to address water shortage and the need. It's an emergency water supply. After spending $160 million-plus for a water treatment plant, we have to have an assured water supply. And this is the way, means of doing that. There's issues with that project. We don't have clear state support financially, although we've been to the legislature many times. But the nice thing is, it's underway. It's a $1.3 billion project, though, and has quite a bit of expense to us. So I do believe, though, that if and how shortages might be identified, there are mitigation plans for how we might address those. So I know that was lengthy, especially for me, but I do think those are two issues that have to be addressed. And the question for me is the timing of addressing those. And I've brought this forward, I'm not trying to do this to sneak up on anybody, but I do think the public knows, needs to know the issues, and for me to have addressed my knowledge of them and the means for moving forward, to make sure those specific issues are addressed, because I think they're larger community issues. And so, again, there's... And so I, again, there's, there's a couple ways of doing it. I think they can be addressed through the PUD process and, and potentially through the, through the studies that are being addressed under the development agreement. And I also, though, I'm very concerned about odor and how we can best manage that, and I don't know where that sits either. So that's my comments for now.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Mr. Phelan, do you have something?
I do. Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Veen, we've had, Ken and I have had several conversations on this. And what I've, what I've asked Mr. Veen on behalf of City Council is I think the development agreement is the right place for this. When they went through planning and zoning, certainly this has been highlighted as an issue, I'm going to say specifically water and odor. And the, the answers that have been provided is those issues are, are developed in the, and required in the development agreement. That will, that we're doing the studies, the engineering, the environmental, and I would say, Mayor Bocinski and members of City Council, that's why we said right now, between now and the end of the year is going to be filled with doing all the various, various environmental permitting and engineering and the studies. There was at one time hope that we would start some early out construction yet this fall, and we've talked with Fu Fang, and that's not going to happen. And so between now and the end of the year, all of those studies are going to get completed, some of the engineering designs will still be worked on. I anticipate the first quarter of next year of 2023 that we would start asking the City Council to go out and bid some of the first out infrastructure, you know, all the underground types of work, perhaps the stormwater regional pond, to move forward with that. And then I can see real, if we get through all the hoops, that the spring of 2023 would be the, where we'd have major construction moving forward. I've said a similar story because later in the agenda, you have cost share. So there are some adjacent property owners that are interested in expanding, growth and expansion. They need the, the water, the sewer, the storm, and some of the street mechanisms to move forward as part of that. And so I've highlighted the fact that we're, we're looking at probably, not this year, but probably more likely next spring to start some of that infrastructure. Not, not only will help serve Fu Fang, but will also serve these adjacent property owners. I think regarding the raw water, we agree with, I think we're at a really, when I talk to Mr. Veen, a really important time, not only with the natural gas, that the state's trying to find a way forward, and they need industry on this side of, of the state of North Dakota to move that natural gas from the west to the east. We were fortunate that we carved out 10 million to serve natural gas from, from the east to the west, but longer term, they do need a trigger, and that's all going to require water. So I think we've really aligned going to the next session, that we're going to have a use for natural gas, we need to strategy that, and we're going to need that with supplementary water, because we know in eastern North Dakota that most of the water that's in North Dakota is in the Missouri River Basin, so we need to find a way to move that forward. As part of all, what Mr. Veen said is, you know, as part of the agreement, we have raw water, that's spelled out in this particular agreement, that's how we're going to serve them. We have various things with utility service contracts that will become before you as we move forward. And I think a lot of that will deal with some of the studies, and we did talk about updating the model that we have. And obviously, we have two water sources here currently. We have the, the Red River, we have the Red Lake River, and we also have return flows mainly from Fargo that we really need to take analysis, above and beyond some of the secondary sources that we have. So raw water specifically is mentioned. I think when it, when that agreement comes back, it spells out what we need to do on the raw water supply part of it. All of the various water-related infrastructures are going to end up in a utility service agreement. So as we work through all the various things, I can see by the, probably if everything goes well, by the end of this year in front of you would be a utility service agreement of how we're going to serve this particular product, you know, all project, all the various requirements that we're going to have, to include the raw water, which is, is going to be a very important water supply. In our agreement, it talks about rate structures, it talks about, you know, how we're going to fund that as an enterprise. And so that's in the various parts of the infrastructure. Even in Section 8, which is on page 30 of the development agreement, it says conditions to, to construction and financing of city infrastructure. And it's, it talks about, we need development plans, we need utility service agreements, it spells out water supply, it talks about raw water. So all of those things are going to have to be spelled out to US City Council before we can move forward with construction and financing. And I, I would suspect the state of North Dakota is going to want something similar. And again, the State Water Commission, they provided us raw water supply funding only for design. So we do have a 60% grant, but what they require of the city of Grand Forks is first, we want to see the studies, we want to see the engineering, and then you're going to come back to the State Water Commission for additional 60% cost share, once we understand what, what the plan is before they're going to award any additional funding for construction. So I think we're, we're well aligned on, on that as part of the, of that. Also on page 32 of 45 of the development agreement, it's 8.1.18, that section, I'll just read it. An odor study has been received by the city, and the city inspector, city planner, and city minister are in good faith and in the exercise of their reasonable discretion have each determined that after the Grand Forks plant is finally completed and operational, there will be no material significant, noxious, or offensive odors originating from the plant. And I know, I think even above this, certainly it sounds administrative in that form, but I think at this point, we've all highlighted, and we've heard many citizens come forward. I think that is going to be a report to the City Council, and we're certainly not just going to solely make an administrative discretion on that. So I think that's the place where we would come back in our utility services agreement, that you would ask for some sort of conditions based upon that study, that currently Black and Beach is, is leading that particular study, that we come back with a report and a suggested conditions that we want to put that ultimately the City Council would put forward. We also have in the study, and Mr. Veen mentioned this too, is an 8.1.22, that spells out our city on public safety planning, it speaks of public safety, public health, welfare, security measures. And so we're going to have a study on all those various aspects, that will come back with similar recommendations, that we're going to come back to and have, ask for an agreement with the city of Grand Forks and with Fu Fang, that would again be in front of the, of the City Council. And then on Section 9, there's conditions for construction of the Grand Forks plant, and, and on and on. So I think one of the concerns, as we've said all, all along, is that there's 20-plus conditions that we have to meet. And I, I would say over the next six, six to nine months, there's going to be a lot of studies and reports that are going to come your way, and not only studies and reports, but actions that we're going to ask the City Council to approve as part of this development agreement. And the, the importance of this development agreement was, for the first time, is that we knew we were going to be studying all these various infrastructure aspects, and we didn't want to get down 12 months down the road on, on these. And Fu Fang would say, you know, we've decided the market's changed, we decided we don't want to invest in this, and we'd be, we would have been out millions of dollars at that point with nothing to claw back on. And I think that was the importance of this agreement, to work in good faith. It was important for that $5 million letter of credit, so that we didn't come to the end of a road and, and they changed their mind. And certainly Fu Fang can still change their mind as part of this agreement, that it's, you know, not the right time or place, just like we can, if it has to be substantive. But at least in this case, if they decide to do that, or if we mutually can't, can't move forward with one of these areas of concern, at least we have some funding back, backup that we wouldn't have without this particular agreement, because we knew it was going to be months on end of study, in this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I just, I just got one comment I'd make. Well, what's the timeline on when the utility agreements start to see some structure in those?
I would say we targeted this fall. So, you know, we talked September, October, that we should have some of the studies start wrapping up right now. We had hope, we're, we're probably six months behind what we thought. We thought maybe we could get in first in infrastructure this fall. I think realistically, we're, and we've told Fu Fang this, is the spring is probably the more likely case. So we have some, we have some time to be more thoughtful and, and thorough, and take some time in, as part of these studies.
All right. I guess one, I mean regardless of whether this project happens or not, I've looked through the drought mitigation policy, you know, a dozen times, and I'm sure someone pretty clever, it might even been Steve Beerin, who's in the room right now, who might have drafted that. It's really clever, but I, it's really hard to understand. I think we need to rework before we have the utility agreements finalized, and Mr. Veen could probably be a great help. But, you know, we do have a lot of water most of the time. But if a 1930s-style drought happens, even what happened last year, we need to spell out very clearly, the residents are, are first take, ahead of industry, ahead of car washes, ahead of everything else. I think spelling it out more clearly would help everybody.
And it gives us a great opportunity, now that the fact that we're working on Red River Valley Water Supply Project, it's under, underway, and this industry that's going to require a lot of, of water supply, it's a perfect time for us to realign that. And we have other industry in our community from JR Simplot and, and others that are going to have to be in that same umbrella of how we're going to prioritize on water. And just so everyone knows, here in, in the city of Grand Forks, our current plans always prioritize residential use, human use is always prioritized over other industrial uses in our community.
Well, engage Mr. Veen. If anyone knows anything about water, he knows more than anybody probably in this room combined, so, well, maybe Sean and Steve were combined, but anyways, make sure that we get Mr. Veen engaged in that, I think that'd be very helpful.
I would just say, I think on the planning and zoning, I think the right mechanism is the development agreement, that's how we spelled it out. And really ultimately, the City Council is the authoritative body, and it's the, you're the body over the next several months that we're going to be reporting back to. I think you're the appropriate body at that point to set the conditions that you're going to have on Fu Fang, and not to put it into a planning and zoning mechanism. It's not meant for that, it's really, these are really meant for the governing body, which is the city of Grand Forks, City Council.
Sounds good. Mr. Veen, anything further? I'll definitely be, you know, continuing. I've testified quite a few times for the Red River Valley Water Supply, and I'll continue to do so. I know you will on your side, too.
Well, you know, I, I probably disagree, well, not probably, I disagree with you, Mayor, on the, if there's a water available. I think the, the issue is going to be how do you, are there, are there means to implement this, implement some level of policy? Because there are times when there'll be no flow in the river in a 30s-style drought. I mean, there just, there isn't. And I didn't, I'm not here to get into details, in fact, I think they're best left to, to be looked at and studied more completely. And a 30s-style drought has been the target, that it's the one, the only true example. We know there's been worse than 30s-style droughts, but 30 is at least, you know, within the last 100 years, and you use that as an example, and, and studies to date has said there will be issues. That's why for 20 years, we've been working on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. It's still not confirmed, I believe it will be, and I'm hoping things like this will help make that progress. Because if we don't get that to progress, then I've got even larger concerns. So we need to, we need to figure out how to make that happen, and we need to put the right kind of pressures on those that can help us. As, as difficult as it is for us, you, we've got a community to the south who may be even more impacted, that needs to have this done. So I really think that it has to be done. We have to deal with what's called the Project Participation Agreement, that's a part of Lake Higbee Water Authority, that's being addressed right now, this month, to trying to figure out how we're going to manage the water when it comes to make sure. I didn't mention, you got North Dakota law, you got Minnesota law, you got Western Water Law, all of those things play pieces into here, and that's why it's so complex. It, it takes all of that to try to figure out how to make sure the water is, is addressed. So the, the thing that I understand, what you've talked about, Todd, with the, with the spec, or with the development agreement, what, what happens is the PUD is probably the best avenue for the City Council to have and manage it. It transitions away from that when it goes to the development agreement. That's, that's what I, I think, we, there's still power there, but it, it changes considerably from what the City Council is able to do in that case. And, and the reason why I bring that up, that includes both the issue with odor and the issue with water. Both of those, I believe, are best addressed as a part of the PUD process, not that all the rest of them are done through the development. I, I just have to say that, that's the way I feel, and I...
I think Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Veen, so I would have to disagree, because I don't, I don't know if you have any PUDs that would deal with raw wa, raw water supply and all those sorts of things. I think the best security that you have, and this is similar to what we were working on with Northern Plains Nitrogen, the surest way that we have to control is through utility agreements and requirements, whether it's on the water side or on the wastewater side or the stormwater side, we're going to have conditional use of how they're going to, requirements they're going to have on all those utility agreements, that are going to be spelled out in detail, and are going to have opportunities where we can do things if somebody's not doing the right things, similar to, you know, industrial pre-treatment program permit. And certainly in that permit, we could, we can provide additional requirements beyond the affluent, beyond the flow. We can do requirements in that, on the wastewater side, on odor in, in those permits, too. So those are all administrative permits that can be reviewed and approved by the City Council under agreements. And I don't think, I think the surest way that you have to have people comply is through legal agreements that are spelled out, all the, all the detailed conditions. And I think if you just put it on a PUD, I don't, I don't know of any other case where we have done enforcement through a PUD, we've done enforcement through ordinances, we've done through enforcement through agreements, legal binding agreements that we've had, where in this case, Fu Fang USA is going to sign the requirements, city of Grand Forks is going to sign those requirements, and we're going to be backed up by the state of North Dakota and the federal government on some of these requirements that we're going to enforce locally. So I still think these are not planning and zoning matters, these are city of Grand Forks, City Council matters, that administratively you need to bring forward to you.
Mr. Sand, did you have something?
I guess, I certainly can't challenge Mr. Veen and his knowledgeable water, but if we're talking about 30s-style droughts, what difference does it make? Because there's no water in a 30s-style drought. At that point, you're right, there isn't enough water to serve any of our industrial users, so tying back, I mean, if we're, if we're going to set the bar at the 30s-style drought, we may as well just put a fence around the city and say nobody else is welcome, because one day, we might not have enough water to serve all the people that are already here. So ultimately, I agree with everything you're saying, Mr. Veen, that we need to have the protections for our community related to the amount of water we have and where the water is going, and who's allocated to get it, and so on, as well as to make sure that the odor, because we all live here, we don't want an organization that's putting a significant odor into our community that is whatever, so we need, we need those protections. I, I agree with Mr. Phelan, though I'm not sure that, I mean, I, I was at the last planning and zoning, I wasn't at it, I was, I watched the last planning and zoning meeting, and there, there wasn't any discussion related to water in, in the PUD. And so I think, you know, when we're, when we're utilizing that group to be vetting these sorts of things, if this were the issue, we probably should have brought it up at the planning and zoning meeting and had them weigh in on it at that point as well. So I, I agree with you, I'm not sure that this is the right place to do it. I ultimately feel like our city attorney would have a very good idea of where we should be best utilizing, best utilizing agreements and so on to protect our community. And so I certainly rely on Mr. Goss and his expertise, so thank you, Mayor.
I think the development agreement contemplated further agreements, and I think I, when I first introduced the development agreement, it was to be a springboard of further agreements that would be presented to the City Council for review and approval. One of which, in fact, I know it's a defined term, and, and Mr. Phelan makes mention of it, the utility service contract. It seems to me that that, you'd have more opportunity to be able to spell out in detail what that means, the, what that means if we get a 30s-style drought, not just with rates, but, but those kind of calamity type of events. You could spell that out in nauseating detail, as to how you're going to address those things. I'm not sure how you'd do that in a PUD document with, with the level of detail that, that is necessary, that I would contemplate. And again, the development agreement, I drafted it in, with the understanding that this wasn't the end, this was the beginning of study, this was the beginning of satisfying conditions, it was the beginning of if those conditions are satisfied, working then towards those more detailed agreements with respect to utility services. I mean, the, one of the conditions, in fact, I'm, I'm now going through and creating a spreadsheet of all the various items...
spreadsheet of all the various items that have to be accomplished under the development agreement, working with Mr. Gaddy as well on his side, so that we don't lose sight of what needs to be accomplished, what those various tasks are, because it's 45 pages long. And to, to put together that checklist to make sure that we aren't overlooking something. We have a date completion of each of those conditions. So, again, it just seems logical to me that, that we have the opportunity to, to think through, reflect on what we want within those agreements, and, and we put them in the document in an agreement that can be enforced through, through that mechanism.
Mr. Weber, did you have something? Please.
Yes. First of all, for clarification, and I've asked this before, but I'll ask it again. It's often been said that the city is moving forward with this project, when in fact, what we have is a development agreement, which is just the opening phase of exploring the 20 contingency points to determine if this is going to be beneficial for our city or not. Am I correct in, in what I just said about the development agreement?
That's certainly my understanding of what the development agreement is intended to do is, we wouldn't have put in the, the conditions for the city to be obligated to start any infrastructure until those conditions are satisfied. Fu Fang also has conditions as well. They want to make sure that, that, that we're, we're moving forward in good faith as well. I mean, it's, it's no different, and I, and I vividly remember a meeting I was at. I posed it in this fashion, that when you buy a house, there's usually a condition in there for you to inspect the house before you're obligated to buy. It's the same thing here, except it's much more detailed type of inspection that we're embarking on with respect to Fu Fang.
Very good. That's, that's very helpful. Thanks. And then tonight, at this point in this evening's meeting, we're being asked to decide on the PUD. And so, my question in relation to the development agreement is, does this PUD, is there any risk that this PUD can take precedence over the development agreement? For instance, or to put it another way, if we agree to this PUD, does that negate the development agreement? Does that force our hand on moving forward with this project regardless of the development agreement? Or does the development agreement continue to take precedence?
Well, the development agreement, one of the conditions in the development agreement is, in fact, that, that it's rezoned. It's not the only condition that needs to be satisfied under the development agreement. So, the answer is no.
Right. We still have the obligation of continuing with the 20, the other contingency points in the development agreement. And it's an agreement. It's not a unilateral dictation from the city. It's an agreement with the developer.
Correct.
Yes. Thanks. This, this is helpful. Mr. Veen, with regard to the water, the legislative committee has generally positioned infrastructure as our top priority every other year when we go to the legislature. If the Red River Valley Water Supply project, should this be our, our top priority in your opinion? And if so, then would, should that come back to the council for our consideration in terms of how we would adjust those priorities? And actually, I believe, I'm, I'm going to ask that question, not just in relation to this development, the Fu Fang development, but listening to you over the last 10 years, this should be one of our top priorities for the health and future of, of our city, our city's economy, even the state's economy. Should this be our top legislative priority? Should we bring that back to the council?
Mayor, it's probably pretty easy for me to respond to that. It's been my number one topic for at least the last 10 years. I've testified many times at the legislature for this, so that there's no question about Part of this, maybe I don't understand yet, and so I'm not necessarily pointing the fingers at everybody, but I was concerned about, once you approve the PUD, when does changes become a taking versus just a change in policy? And what's, what's implied versus what do we actually, what's actually in, in the agreements? Those are questions that I would still like to see answered. And-
I tried to just ask that question. Did I not, did I not ask it well?
Does it, Mr. Phelan, does a PUD spell out any water supply or wastewater supply whatsoever? I mean, you, you spelling out that, is there any other PUD that says you're going to have X amount of water?
Mayor Bochensky and members of the city council, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Brooks is, because really the, it would be beyond the, you know, the formal expertise in the, of that regulatory body. And certainly, we have, that's why, it's always hard with the planning and zoning, is that you, well, it's all done. No, well, there's, there's several state permits, there's several city permits. There's a whole, we have infrastructure that we need to put in, but it's like the first step along the way to move forward. I think Mr. Brooks has demonstrated this, this area certainly in an industrial area. I don't think there's any question that this is an industrial area. It's served near where our infrastructure, all our heavy infrastructure for the city of Grand Forks, it's near, near transportation, it's near rail. It's, it's, it's the reason why JR Simplot's there, because it's an industrial zone. And this is even further way, as Mr. Brooks has demonstrated, we're concerned that this is going to be the furthest the way that we can ever possibly push an industrial development, because it's right on the edge of where our diversion is. And so, everything beyond that, we're going to have to, from an industrial perspective, if we go further north, we're going to have to serve it with a consecutive water use agreement or something, right?
Right.
Those are the ways, almost like serving East Grand Forks. That's what's going to happen next. So, if Fu Fang goes in that site, somebody wants to develop north, we're going to end up with a wastewater service agreement, a water service agreement. We're going to end up with partnering agreements to have them develop. So, I think when we look at this site, even Larry Mackey was here with NPN, right? This was their second-rated site back in the day. They're, you know, they're on the other side of interstate, got some other issues that we're dealing with over, but this is the second priority site that they looked at at, at that point in time. So, I think it fits all the reasons why you'd want to make this zone this industrial. Even if Fu Fang doesn't move forward with their development, you know what we're all going to do? Every time someone comes to town and wants to do a industrial development, the next one hopefully will be a soybean crushing. We're going to show them, this site is an industrial site that is ready-made to move forward, especially after we put all that adjacent infrastructure in, from the roads to the water to the sewer. It's going to help SNS, and it's going to help others in that area to grow and develop also.
Do you have something, Mr. Brooks? Please.
Thank you, Mayor. One more point I want to make in terms of a PUD and putting this into that, some of those future industrial sites, which may need water and we may need those agreements, they not, they may be under a conventional zoning, which would mean there wouldn't be a PUD option. It's better to have development agreements to have these agreements within. So, I'll just make that point.
I think even Mr. Veen, you also said, you know, the, the drought mitigation, the Red River Valley Water Supply, and how that's all going to integrate in there, it's, it's very complicated. And it's so complicated, it's probably going to end up in tens of pages of an agreement regarding that specific issue, because we're going to have to do the modeling, we're going to have to work with the state of North Dakota, we're going to have to work with the city of Fargo and their return flows. It's going to be a complicated agreement that we put together, and it's going to have to be integrated with all the various uses up and down the Red River Valley. And that's why it's meant to be an option of this development agreement, because it is, it's so complicated in that way, and not meant for a planning and zoning type document.
President Sandy. I think, let's face it, if we get to the point when we're in a 30-style drought, we have bigger issues than a corn milling plant in our community. And so, although I agree with Mr. Veen and believe that Red River Valley Water Supply would be regardless of the, of the corn milling plant or NPN or any other industrial user, we would need that for our residents of our community. And so, I certainly agree that we should be pushing for the Red River Valley Water Supply project at the state level. Our legislative commission, committee, if we haven't been talking about it, should think about bringing that back, because there's no reason, as a council, we can't take a stand on that sooner than later. But again, I don't necessarily think that needs to be incorporated into the PUD. But the PU, or the corn milling plant, though, is one of the many reasons why we need the water, the Red River Valley Water Supply project. So, it certainly could and should be a good talking point when we go to the state asking for, hey, let's, we, industry wants to be here, we need to ensure that not only do our citizens have water, industry has water, so that we are a viable option for not only a corn milling plant, but a soybean crushing plant, and you name it in the future. So, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Weber, did you have, sorry, Brett's pointing. I don't know if he's pointing.
No, I, I think we're all on the same page here. I don't think there's any disagreement amongst any of us in, in what's moving forward here so far. I think the, the one issue that I brought forward was, was a special use permit on odor, which was the second thing that I, I thought needed to be a part of the PUD, not the, not to be addressed separately. I think that, that would need to be an issue there. So, I do think we're all on the same play, page. I wish I had, you know, I don't really want to take the whole night tonight trying to, to hash through all the details of what should be in each one of these plans. That's not a good use of, of time. But maybe, maybe the, the solution, at least for me, is if we could table this for two weeks and come back and have some better answers.
How's the public hearing process work, Mr. Gostad?
You've, the public hearing is over. You've conducted the public hearing already, and if you move to, you wouldn't be moved table, moved to postpone the vote, you can certainly do that.
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Veen and I spoke earlier, because we're in the midst of all these studies and reviews, if we come back in two weeks from now, we're not going to have any more answers than we have today, because all the things that we're looking at right now are months out in delivering those answers. And so, I just want to set expectations. If you set, move postponed for two weeks from now, we're not going to have many more answers than, other than we're, we're looking through the various aspects in the development agreement and are working on all those answers. And we meet every week, but we're not going to be able to solve a raw water or the, or the odor or the air quality, all those sorts of things. Those are all in, in the works right now. In fact, we've got a meeting tomorrow with Fu Fang tomorrow afternoon to, to work through all those various aspects and where we're at and what they're doing and what we're doing.
Ms. Dockler, please.
So, if, excuse me, if two weeks is not enough, then would a month be enough time to postpone that, to have some of those answers back?
No. I think that was the original thought, can we do it a month? I said no, because most of these answers are not coming back to you for six months from now. And, and so, you're not going to have that. You know, when I talk about this utility agreement that you're going to have, that's going to include all the various utilities that Fu Fang is going to touch with the city of Grand Forks. And that's, and that's going to take, that's going to take significant time for us to work through all those various aspects of that. So, it's not a short-term process, and nor should it be. So, if I, if I said a week back here, two to four weeks from now, and we'd have all the detailed answers of all these complicated things, you should all wonder, is it that complicated? And the fact is, we're not going to have anything back here two weeks from now, four weeks. We've held that out. That's why we have this, you know, large document here that we're working on, and it's a big responsibility. And so, really today is the start of the first thing in this development agreement that you're looking to approve. And if you, if you talk to Fu Fang over there, the representatives, you know what they ask? How many times are we going to have to go in front of the city council to seek approvals? You know what we say? More than 20 times. More than 20 times, we're going to be up here with all the details over the next several months. That's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of stress on all of us to do that. And, and it's a lot, and so, when people want-
Excuse me, ma'am.
And so, it's not going to be two weeks, it's not going to be four weeks, it's going to be a while.
President Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I think, I think the goal, though, is to have the protections that you're talking about. I mean, Ms. Dockler, if you're looking for protections for water and odor, I don't, what difference does it make if we put it in the PUD or if we follow the, the city attorney's advice and Mr. Phelan's and the, and the mayor's advice to get it in a separate agreement? The important part is that we have the protections for the community, not necessarily the vehicle we use for those protections. But that's just my opinion.
Which goes back to my second question, which was, does this PUD then start driving the development agreement? And the answer was no. The, the PUD is one small step in the development agreement. The, the PUD doesn't decide all of this for us. We still have all of those other 20 decisions that you've mentioned in addition to the PUD.
I think from a city of Grand Forks side, and this is going to be the same if Northern Plains Nitrogen came back to you. The two main things they need to, to deliver their product from the city of Grand Forks, and that's why you have a letter in tent with Northern Plains Nitrogen on two main things, water and wastewater. Those are the two main things. You know what you have on both of those? Because we hold the permits, we have authority. The authority is not in the planning department. It's with our waterworks department.
Okay, good.
We gain our authority through the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. Who gets their authority through the US EPA? Not, not, you know, all due respect to our planning department, they're not qualified to do any of those things. They're not in qualified to enforce those things. The two main things they need from the city of Grand Forks that we're going to have permits on are water and wastewater. And it'll include water, raw water supply, because we're the ones with the permits on both, on the Red River that they're going to need. We're going to have permits as part of the Red River Valley Water Supply project. We're going to hold all-
Mr. Matt, could you sit down, please? The public hearing period's closed. Could you sit down, sir?
So, those are reasons why I'm, I'm saying is that-
The public hearing period's been closed, yeah. Please, sit down. Thank you.
I think he's fine.
Mr. Phelan, please continue.
What are you trying to pull there? Let him stand up if he wants to stand up.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Phelan, please continue.
I would ask you, I would ask you on behalf of, you know, the city departments that are working hard on this, on the due diligence efforts in this particular document, that you would move approval of this planning and zoning item, so we can continue to work on all the various aspects in this agreement. And we're going to be back here tens of times to report back to you. And what I'm saying now, this item that's in front of you, it's going to get harder. It's going to get harder, and it's going to get more detailed, and it's going to get more nuanced, because the issues we're going to bring in front of you are going to be much more challenging.
Mr. Weber, anything further, Mr. Veen?
I think, in all respect, Mr. Phelan, this is probably going to be as challenging of a, of an issue as we have going forth, I think, is, is addressing the water, whole water issue. It's, it's, you know, I've looked through all the others. We know we're going to have serious impacts on wastewater. Those are going to be big issues. I think the water issue is probably as big as any. And the only other one that I talked about really was the, was the odor. And I guess what I want to know, and why that, originally I was going to say, let's wait a month and get these answers, because in a month, we'll have the, the study done with Red River, and we can have the Project Participation Agreement items known. Probably in an attempt to try to not expedite this or delay this any longer, was there some time that we could put forth that would allow us to, maybe as much as anything, understand the ability to do a special use permit specific to odor? And, and so, I ask our, our attorney, what, what's the opportunity there?
If I could, Mayor Bochensky, what I said is, what I mentioned is just to clarify, I'm not, I think the water and wastewater are some of the most complicated things. So, I'm saying that the PUD in front of you is not going to be the most complicated thing you're going to, that's going to be in front of you, for the record. So, I think the water and the wastewater, both parts of this are two of the most complicated items we're going to have. For Fu Fang, it's going to be the air quality permit from the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. That's going to be their challenge. That's months out also. out also.
Mr. Gostad?
Well, I don't think we have a quote odor ordinance permit, except that we do have a condition in that development agreement that speaks directly to the odor, and we're supposed to get the study. And I know that Black and Beach is working on that study. And if that study does demonstrate that, that, I can't remember the language, but material significant odor would arise from this, that's the opportunity then. And we talked about this, is that these conditions, if the condition isn't satisfied, for example, I don't think you just necessarily rush to terminate the agreement. I think you rush to try to solve the present situation, and try to work with Fu Fang to try to resolve that particular issue that the study would reveal. And that then may give the opportunity for the city to say, okay, we've resolved it, and for us to continue on with our observations, we're going to need to include this special permit or observation right going forward, because we've got a condition that wasn't satisfied under the development agreement. And that's our opportunity to discuss and solve the problem through that mechanism.
Right now, we have the ability to dictate what that is. What you're talking about is a negotiation.
But I don't know what the terms of, what, I mean, what terms would you put in, Mr. Veen, for the, because I don't know what those are yet. I don't even know if the, if the study would come back favorably or unfavorably yet. I just don't know what those terms would be. If we're going to put it in the PUD, what would we put in?
Yeah, and I, that I agree. That's why I was looking for some time to be able to identify what you could put in there, to make it so that we would have some level of enforcement for the whole issue with odor, versus negotiating an agreement at a later time.
But you're assuming that the study's going to come back negatively. I don't know that yet.
I don't need a study. When you, if you have an odor, you should be able to smell it, and if it violates the agreement, you can address it, not to a study.
And I understand that, except what's the standard going to be? If I smell it, that, that, that's, that's the concern, and that's why I think we have the opportunity to get the study, get that information, and then, if necessary, incorporate some standard that we'd be able to then enforce going forward.
What is Black and Beach, I mean, they're going to have some scoping here as far as, you know, there must be some mechanism they're using, and you have, you need some basis that's parts per million, some, something like that. Is that, I mean, what's, where's Black and Beach at on that process?
Currently, right now, we're awaiting further information from Fu Fang USA, because it'll be in parts, a part of their air quality submitted to the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. And so, that will get submitted over, probably over the next two to three months. At least, there'll be a draft that will be sent to the state of North Dakota. We'll be in receipt of that particular permit, and be able to start to review, you know, all the particulars, and where they're specifically at, how they're going, kind of movement. That will be in part of that, and we're going to go above and beyond that with odor, right, on this particular area. So, we're two to three months from now, we'll have more data on that issue, and we'll be back with a further study on that.
If you have a utility, a wastewater utility agreement, that's, now we have something that's out of the parameters with the metric that we've set. Is there a place in the utility agreement at that point to basically say you're shut off service? I mean, your plant's essentially shut down if you can't bring your wastewater, you have nowhere to put your wastewater?
I think you're going to have it in multiple different areas. You're going to have it in the utility agreement, you're going to have it in the industrial pretreatment agreement on the wastewater side, the utility, and, and in the odor agreement itself, it's going to be a conditional use onto itself. So, it's probably going to be mentioned in multiple different agreements, whether it's wastewater-related, whether it's facility-related. However, it's related, because there's various studies, and there's various parts of this agreement that are going to be intertwined as part of that agreement.
How did those, I mean, the Blair, Nebraska agreements that you looked at, how do they spell out some of those issues? Because, I mean, these are issues we're going to have regardless of where the company, any company that was going to come, in any type of...
I would defer to Mr. Gostad. I think we probably have a more detailed agreement than either Fort Dodge or Blair, Nebraska.
Yeah, the, my memory is, they were focused on just the providing of the water and the wastewater. I don't think they had any provisions with respect to odor. They were fairly basic agreements.
We're going into far more detail than either of those communities did, aren't we?
I believe that to be the case.
It's good. It's good. It's more work, but it's good. Yeah. All right, still open up to comment from council?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to move approval of item 3.2.
You got a motion to approve from President Sandy. Do you have a second, then we can open up to further comment?
Mr. Gostad, is this...
Just one second, Mr. Phelan. We have a second. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Phelan.
I know, we talked about 3.2, but could you go over this particular measure as part of our, your, our city code?
Yep. In order for the PUD, because it's a rezoning mechanism, you need a supermajority. And if there are less than three fourths of the members of the city council in dissent in attendance, you need unanimous vote of all those present. I think we've got six members. I think Mr. Weigle is still on. The ordinance talks about...
Mr. Weigle, are you there, sir?
I am.
And so, we've got more than three fourths. What it talks about, the ordinance, it's, make sure I got the 18-1001, 4B, says it has to be by favorable vote of three fourths of all the members of the city council, so that it would take a supermajority, three fourth, three fourths vote.
Mr. Gostad, can you talk about numbers if we have six members, just so that you can do the math for us?
Yeah, it's going to require five. That'd get you to 75% or more than 75%. My math is correct?
All right, any further comment?
Mayor?
Mr. Veen?
My intent is not to vote against the PUD. My, my desire is to figure out the best path forward, and I don't want to vote install the PUD. That's why we talked about a postponement or something to get to that. So, I'll be honest with you, to get me to the right place. That's all I want to do, and make sure I feel comfortable with it, because I have to do what I have to live with. And so, that's all I'm talking about. It's given that amount of time, I wanted to have the discussion today. And Todd is right, two weeks isn't probably going to make any difference for a lot of additional data, although I would like to follow up with the, with the odor special use permit. So, I would like to do that, but I would request we just do the postpone for two weeks and see if, what we can get accomplished between now and then.
Mr. Sandy?
Mr. Veen, what's, I actually, I feel like you know something that's going to happen in the next two weeks. What's going to happen the next two weeks?
Time.
Okay, so, you've mentioned, you've already mentioned that there's another water study being done by Garrison, right? And I believe, based upon how some, often studies like this go, they're going to give you best case and worst case scenario. Okay, so, worst case scenario, you've already mentioned, 30-style drought. We know that in a 30-style drought, there isn't enough water. What I can't figure out is, what's going to change, what are we going to learn that I didn't just say? We know they're going to say there isn't enough water under that sort of a scenario. What else could we possibly learn that's going to change the PUD? That's, I don't, I, maybe I'm ignorant, but I don't understand. What are we going to learn? And maybe, maybe you don't know, maybe, just maybe you want to get the study, and maybe there's something in there. And that's an adequate answer, because I don't know. I don't know what I don't know, right? So, I just, I feel like we're, you know, we've been here, we've been doing this, we've been talking about it. We, we know that our city attorney, and the mayor, and Mr. Phelan, and the rest of us have the best intentions of the community in mind. We're all concerned about water and odor as well. I think we'll be able, through the other agreements, be able to have the protections that you're looking for. And, and, you know, I don't think any one of us doesn't want that. We're all on the same page. So, I just, I just, I don't understand. I can't figure out what a two-week, two, waiting two weeks is going to, is going to change. I just don't, I don't see it.
Any further comments? Mr. Veen, please.
Could I maybe request a recess for a few minutes to put my mind around this?
How long would you like?
Ten minutes.
Sure. Can we recess? Can I get a motion to recess for 10 minutes? I need a motion, Mr. ... Okay. You got a motion, Mr. Veen? Do we got a second?
It's true.
Second for Mr. Webber. All those in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Why don't we read adjourn here at 8:10? Why don't we read adjourn here at eight-ten?
Okay. For Mr. Gosted. We've had the two issues that have been going on so far, as everybody is probably well aware of, an hour ago or so. The question I have is on the issue with odor. We have the same authority to address that issue under the development agreement as we do under the PUD. The same identical authority.
What we have under the development agreement, I can't, I'm not gonna tell you it's identical, Mr. Veen, I can't, I can't express that to you. What we've got under the development agreement is a condition, and again, I'm paraphrasing the language, that a study is to be done and administration is to review that study and make a determination as to whether, based upon that study, it would have material significant odor impacts upon the city. If that study comes forward with that type of conclusion, we would then work with Fu Fang to either resolve the issue, which in my estimation would be to include certain conditions for them to operate or to accommodate that problem, which would then give us the opportunity to pursue some sort of standard based upon that, that study as to if they violated going forward from an operational standpoint. You also have to be mindful that, that under the development agreement, all of this has to meet good engineering standards, it has to meet governmental requirements, it has to be usual and customary, those are all defined terms, the, the plant does. So, if through our review process, we find that this odor is a, is an issue, then we, we attempt to resolve it. If we can't resolve it, that's a condition that's not satisfied and we can terminate the agreement, which means we don't have to go forward with any infrastructure. Both parties walk away.
Okay. For Todd, what's confusing me is how a study is going to be the leverage that you need to find out whether something has odor or not. What you just explained to me takes the city council out of the, the process and, and takes it all completely administrative until they find out. I just wanna make sure the city council has the same authority as we currently do.
If, if indeed this study comes back and it's a negative, and we find that, we will be coming back to the, the city council to either ask you to terminate the agreement or resolve the, the issue through either this permitting process or... I don't know how else to answer it, other than in that, in that manner.
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Marine, what I've said is, even if it was an administrative matter on the record, is that the odor issue and whatever the outcome of that study and review will come back to city council for review and approval.
Say that again.
What I've said is, the odor study that will be conducted will come back to city council for review, approval, regardless if it comes back as a, you know, there's no issue or there's issues. The administration, for the record, as part of the development agreement, will bring that study back for city council review, approval, and any additional mitigation or permitting that may be required under this development agreement.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing from you is, is we will retain that authority?
Yes. It will be ultimately a city council approval.
Mr. Weber?
Which again is, is the, the PUD doesn't drive the development agreement. The PUD is a piece of the development agreement, is my, is my ongoing understanding.
No, I, I think they're two different, two different subjects. But all I wanna do is make sure that we have that same authority.
Very good. And, and tonight, what we're being asked to decide right now is to approve or not the, the PUD. A member of the Planning and Zoning Commission brought forward to my attention, there are a couple unusual aspects to this PUD. One is the height of the cooling towers. We've never had a, a previous development where that, not that I'm aware of, where that's been an issue. And then something about wastewater. Mr. Brooks, could you address those two aspects of the PUD?
So, we do have an area that shows where we were allowed to go higher than, normally an I-2 is allowed to go 75 feet high. We do have another PUD that, that, that have done that before, so Simplot...
Okay, good.
MPN both have gone to a higher standard as well.
So, it isn't unprecedented to have that?
Not on the heights, no.
Very good, thanks. Okay.
The, the other exception area is, we actually tried to locate on the PUD where that location, where that, the wastewater was gonna be treated, the pretreatment system that would then be sent to, to the city system. And so, we did identify that on the PUD as well, so just to try to further confirm and give a little bit more detail on that PUD.
And, and these are highly technical documents, well, the PUDs, but it, does this provide any sort of waiver in relation to how the, the developer addresses wastewater? Is there some waiver in the PUD?
No, the details in terms of the, the wastewater is through that pretreatment system, the, the permit that's gotta be done through the city, as Todd had mentioned before, that the city is ultimately the permit holder there and will have that agreement with them.
So, the PUD identifies where that is most likely to be?
Yeah, we gave that, that piece, that geography within the PUD where it was gonna be located.
And all of this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission?
That's correct.
Yes. That, that's all I have at this time.
Just one last clarity?
Please.
Mayor, you understand and agree with what Todd has just said about that coming back to the city council?
Yeah, I think that's an important piece of this and, I mean, odor and water, I think are the two biggest things that need to have the most effort, I mean, without a doubt. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, Public Hearing and Secondary Ordinances Amending Chapter 18, Land Development Code to amend Section 18-0802 relating to, relating to Comprehensive Plan to Update the 2050 Land Use Plan. Do you have any comments on that, Mr. Brooks?
I do not, Mayor. We do have the presentation, if you wanted to see that again, but with that, there, there's nothing changed from the preliminary, so I'll stand for any questions.
All right, we'd open up the public hearing on item 3.3. Anyone here to speak on the 2050 land use plan? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, public hearing period is closed. Any comments, Mr. Weber?
No, go ahead. Mayor, I think you and I were both on that, that team and I think we both came out in support of that, I just wanted to make that...
That was a long, yeah, it was a long process, I think we took over, it took almost a year to finally get all the feedback and everything together on that and I think it's a good plan.
Either I'll make the motion or second it, whatever.
I'll second Mr. Veen's motion.
All right, Mr. Veen has motioned, Mr. Weber has seconded. Any further comments on item 3.3? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.4, Public Hearing and Secondary Ordinances to amend Grand Fork City Code Section 16.0601 and 16.0, 16-0604 relating to Special Assessments in the Grand Fork City Code Section 18-09081 relating to financing of improvements. Got any insight on that one? Everyone's good to go there. Mr. Phelan, this is regarding the deferred special assessment.
This is otherwise known as a three-year deferral. Marine couldn't be here this evening, but I know we've had conversations with Council President Sandy. She is asking you to approve it as, as, and they'll do their very best to notify, and I know we had some discussions about IT and when to do it. She is asking you to recommend and move forward as, as drafted by Mr. Gosted.
I just got one comment, just so that, at last meeting, you approved the July 1 date, I inserted that, that basically is the starting date for this deferral period is when it could possibly start and July 1 was selected, so that was the only change from the first reading.
All right, any further comment on item 3.4? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Let me open the public hearing on item 3.4. Did I do that yet? All right. Anyone here to speak on that item? All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. You got a motion? We have a second? Try to move it along here. Second for Mr. Kamami. Motion for President Sandy, second for Mr. Kamami. Seeing no further conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to action items. I know item 4.0 was not in the cow, so we'd wanna pull that one on item 4.9 as well. Any other items that council members wish to be, have pulled tonight? 410. Any other items? All right, so we look for a motion to approve on the consent agenda, item 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.11, and introduce the ordinances, 4.12, 4.13, 4.14, 4.15, and 4.16. So, need a motion? Got a motion approved from Mr. President Sandy. We have a second. Second from Mr. Kamami. Any further conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 4.0, Authorized Insulation of Secondary Electrical Services for Burying Power in the Alley Adjacent to Franklin on Fourth Development. Mr. Grasser's already up there, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, member of city council. This goes back to Franklin on Fourth, if you remember that, that's the, the old lion's auto across the street from, from the city. There's an alley behind there. We've talked before about burying the power, the electrical power, right now it's, it's overhead and we talked about repaving the alley, kind of in conjunction with, with downtown improvements and specifically, you know, this particular alley. The, the power lines both have an aesthetic feature and they also have a, a necessary construction feature. They need to be moved, basically, before the contractor can come in there and, and, and put in the piers and things. There's really tall equipment that has to go in and, and the lines have to be moved. We've known all this, we've been working on this thing for, wow, several months, four or five months now, and the good news is, in burying the electrical power, XL has agreed to, to basically fund the cost of burying the electrical, the main electrical mains themselves, which is, which is a big benefit and a big cost savings. What they can't participate in though, is that you have to get the power then from that buried line back to the buildings. Right now, they're strung overhead, they're going from a power pole which has a transformer on it back to the, back to the main building, so that kind of work has to be done, basically, by an independent, independent contractor and has to be funded separately. This thing all kinda came together here after months and months of work, it, it came together. Congratulations, Mr. Gosted and other members of the team that made all of these things happen. But what's happened now, as a contractor has a very tight schedule in order to get the necessary construction material out there, the concrete, the precast tip-ups and things like that, they need to start. The best way for us to, to attempt to try to get the, the burying of the power lines and the connections is to start going ahead with the advertising process as soon as possible. So, you see, we're asking in here, you haven't really seen this before, but we are asking to approve the plans and specifications, any budget adjustments, the, the funding is coming out of the 1% infrastructure sales tax. So, we're advertising and authorizing to bid, kinda all at the same time, so we can consolidate this, so we can get it out and the contractors can start work to avoid or minimize any delays we might have with the actual building construction. To a degree, it's, it's part of the time of the year that you're dealing with, you've seen us bring things straight to council before, that sometimes the timing of things just work out that you have to bring things expedite them, we have a short construction season, so the cost of this is estimated at about $218,000 for this work. So, with that, any questions?
Mr. Weber, please. The 218,000, that's all city, city share?
Correct.
And is that all for construction? Are we purchasing anything with that 218?
That's basically what we're estimating the contract to be, that will, you know, that the third-party contractor would, would, would bid, essentially, that's what we're expecting the bid price. There's been a few dollars spent here in, in getting some of the engineering done, there'll be a few more, but the engineering on that's pretty inexpensive, basically. like that. They need to start. The best way for us to attempt to try to get the burying of the power lines and the connections is to start going ahead with the advertising process as soon as possible. So, you see, we're asking in here, you haven't really seen this before, but we are asking to approve the plans and specifications, any budget adjustments. The funding is coming out of the 1% infrastructure sales tax. So, we're advertising and authorizing to bid, kind of all at the same time, so we can consolidate this, so we can get it out, and the contractors can start work to avoid or minimize any delays we might have with the actual building construction. To a degree, it's part of the time of the year that you're dealing with. You've seen us bring things straight to council before, that sometimes the timing of things just work out that you have to bring things expedite them. We have a short construction season. So, the cost of this is estimated at about $218,000 for this work. So, with that, any questions?
Mr. Weber, please. The $218,000, that's all the city, city share?
Correct.
And is that all for construction? Are we purchasing anything with that 218?
That's basically what we're estimating the contract to be, that will, you know, that the third-party contractor would bid, essentially. That's what we're expecting to bid price. There's been a few dollars spent here in getting some of the engineering done. There'll be a few more, but the engineering on that's pretty inexpensive, basically, at this time. We've been refunding that under the $50,000 authority.
This helps to activate that alleyway, important development downtown. I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve. Got a second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Okay, please.
Mr. Grasser, city, so the city of Grand Forks is putting this out for bid, not the contractor?
The city will be, will be putting this, this piece out to bid, yes.
What's our timeline for doing that?
The bids?
Yeah, for putting out the RFP, or the RFQ, or whatever.
We will advertise as soon as we can with the time lag in the, in the Grand Forks Herald. It's probably seven to 10 days out, I'm thinking. Don't hold me to that positive, but it's, we'll get it advertised in the Herald, I guess, as soon as we can.
And, last question, who's, who's putting, oh, two-parter. Whose estimate was that? Our engineering department's estimate of the cost?
I believe this was put together by the consultant that we hired to put together the basic plan, M, or is it MBH? MBN. So, there's, basically, our consultant has helped us put those costs together.
Okay. And, but we're going to be putting the RFP together ourselves, or are we having a consultant?
It's going to end up being a city project, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Veen?
Al, do you see this happening in other alleys downtown over time, then?
Certainly could. You know, there's, there's a general, you know, for aesthetic and other reasons, there's generally a desire to get rid of some of that electrical. Will it happen again? Probably someday. I don't, I don't have anything lined up. The next, the next project that we see down the, down the line is all of Ann, and my understanding is we're not looking at burying that power. The building location and whatnot isn't as critical as this particular location. We actually pushed a while back trying to get some of that work qualified under, under the governor's downtown initiatives, but it doesn't, doesn't work in that situation.
And that was my second question. I thought that there were programs that were available for downtowns that have been used in other communities.
Other than what XL themselves may offer, and again, they're, you know, they're offering to actually bury the main line, which is something, as I understand it, is, I think, more than they've done in the past in some of the other communities. So, they're, they're trying to bolster the program in the, in the process. I think it's improving as it goes through time.
All right, any further comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 4.9, Highway 81 Infrastructure Special Assessment Cost Shares. Mr. Phelan?
Mayor Bocinski, members of City Council, we had a nice, good, robust discussion on this. I just want to highlight, the, the motion you approved were all the various cost shares that are on the staff recommendation. You did move all of those. I did get, and it's for, and it's all subject to final review and approval of the city attorney's office, so as part of these cost shares. I did get word from SNS Transport from Mr. Dilly, and I just want to, I said I would come up here and just emphasize, if you look under item 4.9, the two schedules that I want to point out to you as part of the motion is letter E, and that's the estimate for the 50% cost share on the regional pond, and that's without Fu Fang. The letter G that would be approved is with Fu Fang, and there is not a special assessment if Fu Fang moves forward as part of that regional pond. So, when I'm asking approval on the, on the attached spreadsheets, those are the two that I'm asking for approval on. SNS Transport has provided me this afternoon in an email that their recommendation is the 50-50 cost share. At a 20% city cost share, they don't think that's doable for them, so they are, your recommendation currently, right now, is that 50% cost share, which is highlighted in letter E. That's what they're asking for this evening. And what we've always said is, what's good for SNS Transport and their associated businesses is good for everybody up and down Highway 81. There was a question, and I asked our, our good colleague, Christian Danielson from the engineering department, there were a couple of questions on the spreadsheets, and maybe there's some breaks in the formulas. I asked Christian to come here this evening just to highlight what those were, so before you move approval, you know what, what those changes were.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mayor Bocinski, members of the council. There was a little bit of discussion last week regarding these spreadsheets, and a couple of questions that came up, and there were some things that got caught here in the spreadsheet, and we made a couple of changes to adjust it to reflect those changes. And I think the biggest one that you'll see from last week's spreadsheets to this week's spreadsheets are in these estimated yearly payment columns. It was brought to our attention last week that the 20% sheet and the 50% sheet were showing the exact same numbers, which would have been incorrect. So, we've now adjusted that so that they're all different. The 20% is no longer the same as the 50% for the yearly payments, and that's all reflected on the spreadsheets that are up on the city website right now. So, we made that change, and then, President Sandy, you also brought up that there was some nomenclature at the top in the headings that might be a little bit misleading or incorrect. So, we went through all the headings and made sure those were all consistent with whether it's an assessed cost or proposed to be a city cost. So, we kind of went top to bottom on the spreadsheet, double-checked everything to make sure that we were representing everything exactly how we wanted to, and I think we captured most of those changes here. So, the one that's on the screen right now is the 50% sheet that Mr. Phelan brought up, and then the other one that we're looking at is the spreadsheet that assumes that Fu Fang comes through. And we went through both these spreadsheets and made sure that everything that we could see was correct in them. So, these are still technically in a draft format, but if there is any other issues, we're, we'll take a look at them, but we think we caught most of it at this point. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them on the spreadsheet.
Question, please, Mr. Veen.
Yeah, I'll just say, but thank you, Mr. Danielson. I, I see that you updated the information. I really appreciate it. It helped me, and there were people that were asking me questions about it today, so it made it easier for me to explain once we got it updated out online. So, I do appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Danielson?
Well, maybe this is for Mr. Phelan. You and I talked also about the ability to use economic development funds as appropriate. That'll come back to us at a different time when we need to do that, right?
Mayor Bocinski, members of City Council, Councilmember Veen, I think in the spirit of approving this, we'll come back to with prioritized ranking of funding, knowing that economic development will be first, probably some prairie dog, and then we'll look at the enterprise funds. But we'll bring back a funding strategy once we're near the bidding of these various infrastructure pieces. Maybe one more thing is, you know, we talk a lot about Fu Fang, but, you know, we had really good meetings with SNS Transport, and they really do need, as part of their really exciting upcoming expansions that they have on their properties, you're going to see the SNS Transport and associated buildings come through with, through planning and zoning. And so, there's going to be some modifications. Just, you know, I can anticipate, based on our meetings last week, that though, that development is going to be moving through planning and zoning, and all the various things will need infrastructure development. So, they probably need infrastructure development as soon as we can deliver it from a water sewer and stormwater perspective. So, you'll see that over the next two months. So, that's exciting, that some of this first in infrastructure is not only going to serve Fu Fang, but it'll serve these adjacent Highway 81 areas, too.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Mr. Warkup, you had a comment, or comment card, you want to say something? It's not 4.9 listed, please.
I'm John Warkup, 1310 Council Circle. I'm here on behalf of SNS, SNS Properties and Signature Warehousing and other SANG entities. Yes, we had some meetings last week with Todd and other folks from the city, and I appreciate the time that they take with us to work through the issues. As Todd mentioned, one of the most important issues for my client at this point is the timely development of the infrastructure. If that doesn't occur in a timely fashion, and my client were to finish his projects before the, the infrastructure was available, my client would then have buildings or development that isn't usable. So, in speaking, the, the draft of the annexation agreement that I had provided before, that was in your packet, we had a provision in there for indemnifying the SANG entities if those utilities were not available. That's, the indemnification was not something that was in the staff recommendation last, at the committee of the whole meeting, and I don't believe it's in the recommendation from the staff at this meeting either. But we've, after speaking with Todd and Mr. Grasser and other engineering folks, we've modified the timeline a little bit. We understood that the timeline might be towards the end of 2023 for things to be in, especially potable water. But now, as we understand, it's probably towards the end of August of 2024. And I believe that would be acceptable to my client, that timeline. But we would like some assurance that the potable water will be available, assuming my client has his project done, and it's otherwise already available for use except for the potable water. We would like an assurance that, that the potable water will be available, and if it's not available, my client would be suggesting that the, the city would cover the rent or the loss of income for an unusable building until such time as that potable water is available. The issue in this particular situation is sprinklers. The groundwater system does not have adequate supply to do a sprinkler system. An alternative is to make a giant reservoir and sprinkle it that way. That's highly cost prohibitive, and that was the first idea that was, that was brought forth, and that, and that was not acceptable to, to city staff. This alternative is much less costly, and it would be, the property would be developed as if the potable water were available from the city. The permits would be applied for in that manner, and the, what the Signature Warehousing and other SANG entities are asking for, is if that potable water isn't actually available by the time my client's projects are finished, the city would cover the loss that might be incurred until such time as the potable water is made available. As far as the August of '24 date is concerned, I understand from Mr. Grasser and Mr. Phelan at the meeting that we had, that August 24 is a doable date, a reasonably achievable date for potable water to be available. The potable water in this situation would come, as I understand, from the 27th Avenue South area. That's where the potable water would serve the properties that my client is looking to develop, and that's one of the first areas that I understand the city would be seeking to install the infrastructure into. So, along with the matters that Mr. Phelan has listed in the staff recommended action, including the 50-50 cost share as opposed to the 80-20 cost share, which I understand the city council already set forth and approved in its, or suggested approval in its committee of the whole meeting, we are looking for some form of, of written assurance that the utilities, the potable, potable water especially, will be available by August of 2024. If there are questions, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President Sandy, please.
Mr. Warkup, what comes after that? What's, what's next? Is this, is this everything SNS wants to move forward?
As far as development is concerned?
Yeah, as far as, after tonight, are, in two weeks, are you going to be asking us for something else? I, I'd love to get to the end of this. I feel like I keep chasing the end of the rainbow.
Well, Mr. Sandy, Mayor Bocinski, there was a provision in the previous, I mean, you sound like this, this indemnification is brand new.
No, no, no. All I'm trying to do is, I want to confirm, based upon the discussions that SNS and Mr. Dilly and yourself had with the city attorney and Mr. Phelan, and then our previous last week's suggestion for the 50-50 cost share, and now, if, if we agree now, that, okay, we'll rent the building that, that SNS builds that doesn't have potable water because, for some reason, somebody who, then were apparently suing because they didn't put the pipes in in time, will, is there anything more than SNS wants? Or if we agree to all of these conditions tonight, is SNS going to say, we're on board with the annexation, and we're, we will publicly tell people that we're in it with the city, and this is a great deal?
Well, yes, Mr. Sandy, the agreement for annexation, which I had drafted and presented to the city count, city staff a while ago, has the various provisions in it that the city, that SNS was asking for. And as one of those items, it related to the potable water, that's item number eight in the proposed annexation agreement. What I've done is, after discussions with Mr. Phelan and Mr. Grasser and other folks on behalf of the city, changed that to make it more palatable to the city. And so, yes, that's what we're asking for at this point, is we've, we've trimmed those requests down, not added new something.
No, I, no, I understand. I appreciate that. I, I 100% believe that you did that. Ultimately, that, and you were working, I believe, in the best interest of collectively so that we could get to the end of the rainbow. I just want to make sure that there isn't anything else, because we have been doing this for a long time, and we've been trying to figure out the best way to make the folks up in Faulkner Township happy, the businesses that are there, and do our due diligence on the, and our fiscal responsibility for the citizens of Grand Forks, who are also our taxpayers. And so, I just wanted to, I was looking for some sort of concurrence, that everyone's on the same page now, and SNS, assuming we agree to this, SNS is not going to protest the annexation.
That's correct. The proposed annexation agreement that I have is for Signature Warehousing, Brad SANG and Brian SANG, and then SANG Holdings LLC. And one of the provisions in there is that those various aforementioned property owners would waive protest annexation.
Great. And, and I think it'd be great if one of these times, they could step up to the mic and say the same thing, or just start propagating that around the community. I think that'd be great for all of us. Thank you, Mr. Warkup.
Yes. Any questions for Mr. Warkup? All right. Todd, I guess I'll ask you a question here. How, you know, I think any agreement that's done should, should be suitable for the entire, everyone that owns property up there? I mean, how do you manage something like that? How do you limit, you know, risk? There's a lot of different pieces to try to do something like that. What are your thoughts? And then we'll hear Mr. Gostad's, as well as Tractorly.
Mayor Bocinski and members of City Council, we talked about this, and, and what we did point out in our own development agreement, we've got goals and guidelines, we have Gantt charts, but we don't have any, Fu Fang can't penalize a city with the same water main if we don't get it there at a certain point in time. So, I know the discussion has been with, maybe the, Fu Fang didn't push back on that, right? All we, all we're working with, with Fu Fang, and under our development agreement, that's kind of, is it, one of the reasons why the water's going to get developed there, is all we have to do is work in good faith. And so, what we did say with Mr. Dilly and Mr. SANG and Mr. Warkup is that when we bid, and I'm going to probably call him my colleague, Al Grasser, is that when we bid, this warehouse is going to be, is going to be north of where 27th Avenue is, in a, in a greenfield lot. So, when we bid the 27th Avenue North Water Main, which will be the, it's going to go up north on 81, it's going to head over to 27th, okay? Is what we'll do is incorporate as part of that bid, that, you know, if we should live so long, will be bid in the winter of '23 for spring construction in '23. We would bid it so that, knowing that this warehouse, this 100,000 square foot warehouse is going to be built, that we would bid kind of a stub off that 27th Avenue North, so that we could serve that with fire protection, and that we would incorporate that into the city bid if we needed it at that point. We didn't talk about a specific date, but we did, we did talk about how best can we serve this area so they can get hooked up with water, and so they can, and start, obviously, doing what they want to do with their business. So, with that, Al, do you have any more technical words than what I just said? I think our goal, I think, if I could have a motion, like everything, we're going to do everything we can within that 27th Avenue North First Phase Water Distribution System to incorporate the SNS Transport Warehouse and Development, so that we can do everything we can within the city of Grand Forks to ensure that we can serve them with a fire flow for their sprinkler system. That's what we put out, and I don't know if that's part of the motion, but we're going to do everything possible, just like we've said to Fu Fang as part of our development agreement.
Mr. Gostad?
Yep, just to that, it's, I did not recommend that, because basically what's happening is, and I appreciate the, the comment, but the city becomes the guarantor here of a lot of things. And I think the mayor's point is well-taken, is, is how do I do this with respect to other landowners that are within the annexation area that may want to do some? landowners that are within the annexation area that may want to do some development and we become the guarantor for making sure that we've got infrastructure in place by a date certain that we can control. So it wasn't by I have not recommended that that we enter into this type of agreement with with that we're guaranteeing that 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 infrastructure. And I understand it it's doable, but strange things can happen and then all of a sudden we're hooked financially to, I think Mr. Sandy put it well, we're basically renting a facility at that point. And I think if, as Mr. Phelan spoke about is we work in good faith to to get to the to that date. But if we don't, it doesn't mean there's a financial penalty towards the city on it.
Mr. Veen?
Mr. Phelan, could if if the unexpected happened, could a temporary line be put in place so that we wouldn't have to go through that just long enough till a permanent one could get put in?
Yep. Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Veen, we talked about that and even incorporating that into the into the bid so that we could do it ourselves. We've got the contractor there to do that. We just need to make sure we get that 27th Avenue North Water Main in there so that we can do that. But we were going to put some options in that bid so that if we did need to do some things, we'd have the contractor either either through a change order or have a bid price upfront as part of that, a phase one water distribution project. And I we I think, Al, as we we think we can do it. I think at best we've kind of similar to that funding. Our our goal and expectation is bringing economic development funds first. Our goal and expectation as SNS and their related companies brings that warehouse through planning and zoning, we're aware of it, and we're going to do everything in good faith to deliver fire flow to that facility.
All right. So Mr. Sandy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So we're going to put that option when we bid that we are going to do that?
We are going to do that.
Is that satisfactory to SNS? I mean, I I think it'd be very difficult for us to say we're we're willing to pay you lost rent on the facility. You haven't even mentioned how much it would be. For example, we don't even know where we're starting. But ultimately, your goal is to make sure that we meet that deadline. And knowing that we are going to put in the option into the contract for providing that water so that we have an option to have it to you, does that cover your concerns?
I would say the discussion of SNS, you know, is I feel good that they're developing, they need the water system because when we we went to the State Water Commission and asked for approval, one of the questions is what happens if Fu Fang doesn't come? And what we said is that this area needs fire protection and fire flow anyway. And so I think we've got a really great example in this business that we need to put the water mains in there regardless of whether Fu Fang comes immediately or not.
And I understand there, you know, they're going to use the 2024 construction season. You don't want to put money into it and not be able to have income coming back. I can certainly understand that. We've, you know, this project's been talked about for a long time. I think it's a probably a better solution than you were thinking from the beginning as far as cost. I'd have to imagine that and you could have asked to be annexed sooner. But it, you know, without this, it probably would have been a lot more expensive. So I think it's a it's a happy medium. We're going to do the best we can. I think we're going to have to live with that one. Just my opinion. Mr. Grasser, you never commit to a date, so.
Yeah, the 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 issue really isn't the stub. The the once we get the the water down to 27th, basically, we have to come off of Washington Street, put in about a half mile pipe to get into that vicinity. Once the water's on 27th, I just it we're going to get a connection there one way, shape or form. The quest, the only question really is we have to get that water to their vicinity. So it's really not a matter of the stub. Mr. Phelan was explaining how we might handle it within the contract to make it easier. But the real issue is we just need to get the water over to 27th. And there really isn't, in the normal course of events, you know, 2023 really shouldn't be a problem. But you just in our crazy world, it's hard to guarantee anything.
I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, but but we'll know, I guess I don't know the timeline for SNS construction on their lot. We were talking 2024. We'll know if if the pipe isn't there at the end of 2023, we'll know that there's an issue. So perhaps SNS would have the capability to slow down construction or whatever. That's their business, not mine.
Let's just get it there in time and it'll work out for everybody. Any further comments? So I guess what we're looking, what is the, I guess, the motion from Cal Committee of the Hall was on essentially E and G. Is that correct?
Correct, yep. The the city council recommendation to itself here as city council with the noted letters with and without Fu Fang, the 50% cost share in the letters respond to 50% cost share without Fu Fang and then with Fu Fang, there's a 0% cost share. And if you want to add in, we'll do everything in our good faith method to get water to 27th to serve the first end infrastructure and warehouse for SNS Transport.
All right, do we have a motion for such?
I'll make that motion, but I also have a comment.
Okay, let me get a second first and then we'll come back. Got a second. Motion President Sandy, second first. Mr. Sandy.
I actually, I really appreciate all the heavy lifting that city staff, the city's attorney's office, Mr. Phelan Engineering, and certainly our good friends up in Faulkner Township. SNS put in a lot of time and and their own money on this to make it tolerable and easier for themselves and all the other businesses up there. I think we've done a good job being resourceful, trying to find funds to help make this palatable to everyone and the the taxpayers within our community. So I do, although sometimes it's frustrating, I really appreciate the effort that went in from from SNS and their team. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item 4.10, variance to access control in order to allow two entrances at the 40th Avenue South or to 40th Avenue South located at 4,002 South Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm going to move approval of the of the two accesses accesses to the property. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear because the staff recommendation is to discuss the project, not to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Planning and zoning moved to approve both entrances. I would like to vote to affirm their motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We got a second from Mr. Weber. So a motion from President Sandy, second from you did motion correctly. Yes, okay. Second from Mr. Weber. Mr. Veen, did you have a comment?
I would like to see.
Take a look at it.
Presentation. I'd like to see a presentation. If that's your staff recommendation, I would like to understand why you differ or why they differ from you maybe.
And I apologize, we did get the we caught that late in the day and we did get a corrected staff report out, but late today. I'll pull up and and quickly show you where the location is and indicate some of the concerns staff had and then ultimately what Planning Commission did. So the the plan as we have it, probably doesn't. So here's 40th Avenue South, here's South Washington Street. The Holiday Gas Station is just across the way here. I'll zoom in here a little bit more so we can start to see some of the details. So currently, this is the location of that. There's an old farmstead, I guess I'll say there, a residential house. It's a very sizable lot. So we did anticipate in the future that we're going to see a lot of development on the site and that's that's what the the proposed development is doing. There's three buildings on the site. There's drive-through tenant building here at the corner. There's a mixed-use building here with drive-through and drive-through. And then on the southern portion of the site as well, a rather large mixed-use building as well. So one of the issues, a little unusual with this lot, to the north here, South 15th Street tees at the 40th Avenue as you head to the south, it does not continue on. It becomes this private Acorn Street, which does not connect to 40th Avenue South. So what that does is that curves around here and then connects back up with 40th Pioneer Drive. And so with all this development, really what we were looking for originally was just one access in and out. The developers requested and Planning Commission approved two accesses. So we didn't get into particulars of what that would look like, but we would evaluate that and make a recommendation through our traffic engineer of ultimately what those would look like, right in, right out, three-quarter, that type of thing. But they did approve the two accesses, one location here, which is roughly the middle of the site. In the future, we'll have one matched to the north and then this one additional here.
Why why was the recommendation for just one or what's the issue with having two?
To meet our spacing requirements. Typically, what we would have looked like are through our our access, we would have expected a road to continue on here and then they would have access on the backside. So one of the reasons they're asking for something different is they didn't have they didn't have the ability to connect up to here at South 15th Street. So they were looking for an additional entrance and exit at this location on the west side just because they they do not have access to get to South 15th Street.
But your recommendation was not.
Yeah, staff recommendation was just to go with the one.
And why? Just one?
Just number of accesses conflicting turning movements, that type of thing.
Conflicting turn turning movements?
Yeah, the potential of of this offset and what that would look like. There is ways that we can start to mitigate that and work through a traffic engineer to potentially do right in, right out or something like that to correct that issue. So those are the things that we would, if this was to continue with two accesses, we'll we'll look at how to mitigate that through whatever turning movements we need to restrict, potentially three-quarter.
And you could do you could do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Right in, right out, three-quarter yet.
Yep, that's correct. I think there's still a potential if we would have potentially done that ahead of time and had enough time, we could have come forward with a recommendation similarly.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if you if you watch the planning and zoning meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion from the developer that they want to bring in a national chain. National Chain says without two ingress and egress points, they're they're out. They won't do it because of fire protection and other reasons. Not only that, but if you're having mixed-use development in here, mixed-use properties, there are going to be a significant amount of deliveries. And with one egress and ingress, it makes it very difficult to get a significant size truck in here, which is why they they also asked for this. I think Mr. Grasser made a very good point that folks that are turning right off of Washington that want to make the quick left in, you could ultimately back traffic up like like what happens by Starbucks. And that's why he had suggested that we could do a right in, right out only. And the developers were on board with that. So the staff was going to be working with them to come up with the right right plan for that for that piece of property. And because of that, Planning and Zoning said, yes, okay, we're we're, you know, we're crossing all the tees and so they moved in seconds. So that's why I agree with the plan that they put forward. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same time, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to five information items. 5.1 Investment Portfolio Summary as of 4/30/2022. And on to six citizen comments. I know a few people had spoken during the public hearing, so we've got, I'm just going to list off who I've got here and feel free to come up. Chris Byrd? He's gone. Jody Carlson?
Mayor, I just wanted to ask you, just to clarify, that you mentioned early on when a few months ago, a couple of months ago, as far as pulling the plug, if we look at any changes with the geopolitical climate. And I'm wondering where you're at with that.
Yeah, I think it's it's obviously that's the question of the day for people that have the China concerns and it's something we're reviewing all the time. I was down last week at Maxwell Air Force Base as part of a national security forum. I think these things are all helpful. So to have an exact answer, I think, is tough, but something that we're all considering. I know we all have been considering that.
But you're still you're still, that's still a point.
Yeah.
Correct?
Well, I mean, as much as administrative what we can do, yeah.
Right. But I mean, as far as it, when you look at national security risk, that that when and if the information comes to you, that you're still willing to pull the plug on this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Coachman? Is he here? No. Okay. Is Mr. Matzek here? No. Mr. Cadillac?
You guys are proceeding with the fact that you're going to do research so there's no smell. And I would assume you did the same thing with Red River Bio, but right now they're closed down trying to fix that. And and you're telling us that you're going to have this fixed before you go ahead with this project. I'd like to know how you plan on doing that. Because once this smell starts, every customer of mine is going to want to not stop. You're you're going to have so much liability at my place alone that I'll keep you busy 24 hours a day with 24 different attorneys. You know, my property is the only property on the other side of the road there. People come in there now with semis to turn around. That's not what my lot's for. My lot gets destroyed. But the problem is going to be the smell. Because once this smell starts and you run everybody out of my shop, there's going to be a lot of liability there. And so I I'd like to know how you guys figure you can proceed and you're not going to have a smell from this facility. And if it's not the smell alone, it's going to be the steam. Because you're going to have 2 million gallons of steam going up in the air. And if I don't get it, then that airport's going to wind up getting it. And FAA hasn't even come in on this yet, but I'm going to bring them in on this. Because you guys aren't going to give me any answers. I asked a question here last week when you weren't here, Mr. Mayor. And I understand that two years ago, you were told in Bismarck that there was going to be no gas coming here from the west. But the first two meetings at least I attended here, they were talking about bringing the gas in from the east. We're we're being told things constantly as fact and then we find out there's no fact behind them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coachman.
So so and it's Mr. Cadillac, not Mr.?
Sorry, I saw him walk in. Jeez. And on the gas, we've stated that it's two years to get it from the east, it's five plus from the west. We we want it from the west, we want it directly from there. We're hoping that that's what comes. But someone's got to build a $2 billion pipeline to get it here.
Yeah, and who's who's going to watch out after my liability? Because you're saying now that you're going to make sure there's no smell. And I'm sure when you proposed Red River Bio, you did the same thing. And they're still shut down. So you understand your liability you're going to have when it starts producing smell. I want that on record and I guess I got it on record and none of you have nothing to say about it.
Anything else, Mr. Cadillac?
I guess that's going to be about it because I'm not going to get an answer from you guys anyway.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Beclaire?
Good evening again. And I, first, I want to thank you very kindly for, it sounds like you're slowing things down for more due diligence. So I know I've been awful tough on you, so that's a very positive thing. I'm very glad to hear about the odor water and moved up to due diligence. I would suggest again, again, all house on the other side have our biases. I've had very good past experience with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, whether water or air. So I would suggest for the community, if you could have them come there to be kind of independent and qualified, that would address a lot of citizens' concerns. Couple of things I want to reference relative to, to water and odor both. First, first on a, I'll say a macro thing that nobody's talked about. When I do the rough math, again, this is not Gappa County. The city is using 7.6 million gallons a day of water. If I said if we allocated 1 million to residential, that leaves 6.6 million gallons a day to quote industrial use in the community. I asked how many jobs are in the community? We got 55,000 residents. I use the number of 23,000. Right? So when I do the math backwards, every day, you're getting 280 gallons per day per job. 280 gallons per day per job. Fu Feng, right, if you look at the 6.6 million gallons, 233 jobs, it's 28,000 gallons per day per job. 28,000 gallons per day per job. Mr. Veen, regarding your water, I share your concern, but I'm even further up the chain, and that's opportunity cost. If you allocate this amount of water to Fu Feng, how much are you going to have available for another business? You're right about Western water rights. I'm very familiar with them. Fu Feng is going to have first dibs. So how many businesses are you going to pass by because you don't have the water? I, I agree with you wanting to bring water from the west to the east. You get the Corps of Engineers, Concerns of Water Supply, environmentalist, you know, give me a wager, you won't see that water in four to five years. So I'd seriously think about the opportunity cost if you allocate this much to Fu Feng, future businesses that won't locate here because Fu Feng's going to have access to water. Right? I, I hear Mr. Sandy agree. Does it matter in a drought? No. But if you're the business behind Fu Feng, your water's going to be shut off before them. They will come here. That's simple. Appreciate the comments here. Regarding odor, one thing that's amazed me that hasn't talked about, I did talk to Sean regarding this, is mass flow, or I shouldn't say mass flow, the water balance. Right? You're going to use 6.6 million gallons a day, 3.3 million is going to wastewater, right? 3.3 million gallons of water is going someplace else. My past experience with project development, I asked him how much water is going up the cooling tower? Where's the other water going? And this is my experience again with odor is going to be your dryers and how much wet feed. Right? Those things you need to consider, again, North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, they will help you understand that and the concerns they have. So that's one thing I look at, is where the other 3.3 million gallons of water is going each day. Final thing, and appreciate you be along with my three minutes, and that had to do with you. Mr. Sandy, on April 18th, I had a question about conflict of interest relative to the city attorney. You asked him if he was doing his job. I agree with that. My, my point was on this, and let me, I've discussed this with two attorneys. I've had 20 years of board experience, conflict of interest training to back up my following statement. So please consider that when I make, read my question. It was relative to the conflict of interest when the city attorney gave his opinion on the petition. The reason why that's important, the city attorney represents the city, the council, you have the citizens on the other side. So all of a sudden, the city attorney is going for, you might say, being a member of the team, to be in the referee, to give an opinion. Who gives opinion? Judges do, right? Would it be acceptable at a basketball game if you had one of the coaches that want to be ref and given, make call balls and strikes, fouls, et cetera? So I read my, my opinion, why I see the conflict of interest as I discussed with other. The city attorney and his firm have a financial interest, billable hours, including past, present, and future Fu Feng developments in Grand Forks. Financial interests at stake. Based on the Grand Forks city account, the, his firm has built over $80,000 in revenue strictly related to Fu Feng. Thus, the city attorney should not have given an opinion on the Fu Feng citizens' petition. Could have hired another law firm to do that because his opinion is qualified. You're qualified, sir. Are you independent? Based on my experience, no, because you have a financial interest. Right? So if you would have said no, there'd be no future billable hours for your firm. Right? That's, that's where the conflict arises there. Moving on, furthermore, Council Max, at the appropriate standard in dealing with conflicts of interest, we allowed to Fu Feng, she acknowledged the indirect conflict of interest that based on employer's work and may have in future work for Fu Feng project. Thus, you refrain from all voting, giving an opinion was appropriate. Now we have a city attorney's firm, a direct financial interest in Fu Feng and giving an opinion, opinion that should never have been allowed because of direct conflict of interest. Furthermore, the city attorney and his firm, the people hired by the city of Grand Forks to prevent, monitor this form of conflict dealing with are the ones that committed the error in judgment. So that's my comment. When you have a financial stake, and I've been there many, many times, you do not give an opinion. There's no reason why Mr. Gosted had to give the opinion. There's plenty of qualified people. As you look at the trust in the community, people bring this up. This is not normal. Again, that's my comment. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Beclaire a question?
Sure.
Would you be willing to take a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
You've been coming to these meetings, and I really appreciate it. You've been making valid points. You've been asking very logical questions. You've, you've brought up the fact that you have lots of experience related to odors. And tonight, you mentioned that you, that you understand water and water quality and water permitting. You've also mentioned tonight that you've had over 20 years of boards of directors' experience. Can you fill us in on your experience, who you are, and how you know everything that you know about this? Because if you're going to challenge the city attorney related to his conflict of interest, I'd be interested to know if you have a conflict of interest.
I'm glad you asked that question. First, conflict of interest, I shared very early on. Right? The reason why I'm here is, is a personal reason. I have two family members. I have an aunt that's a nun in the Catholic Church. I also have a cousin that's a priest. Related to China and the way they treat minorities and they lock up people of the Catholic faith. If I could go on, I have four children, right? I teach them to lead by example. I've never been an activist. This just happens to be an intersection where I have experience with corn, corn wet milling, my board experience.
What, what board is that, sir?
So I served on Golding Growers for over 10 years. That's owner, right? Owner of the corn wet mill in Wapentin SCC reporting company.
Got it. A car, a car Gill operated company?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, they lease, they lease the plant.
They lease the plant.
Yeah, also worked at Dow.
Are you still on the board?
No.
No, okay.
No, no, I, right?
I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, no. Feel free to go ahead. Right? And then also, you teach your children about giving back to community. You know, I look at where this plant was located at, and, and again, I'm at odds with, with development. I don't think it should be on the city limits. I look at past experience as the best indicator of future results. So you look at people run ag processing plants, American Crystal Sugar, Mendac, right? When they're bit poor gold, they can locate it anywhere. Where did they locate it? Three miles north of Wapentin. Why do you think they did that?
Water?
There's water every place around Wapentin. It's because they wanted to be a good neighbor to the community, sir. Right? The key to pollution is dilution, right? The more space you have between your neighbors. Do you know about water treatment? Who, who treats the water coming in? They do. They handle all their own water, waste treatment on site. Do you know how many violations they've had in the past 20 years? Zero. You're bringing Fu Feng in the room, right? They over have 20 violations in China. I'm just thinking how bad you have to screw up in China to get a violation. I'm biased, sir. I'm just stating for the fact. Does that help you with that?
It does. Thank you. You are definitely qualified to provide opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beclaire.
Brittany Creach? Am I pronouncing that right?
You are.
All right.
Hello. This has been a very long evening already. It's been quite the experience. I'm Brittany Creach. I represent the Sons of Liberty, the North Dakota Sons of Liberty, not to be confused with any militia or military type group. Give you guys just a quick background on who we are. In a nutshell, this is what we stand for. This is who we are. We are literally made up of a group of patriots. We are all North Dakota residents. We have established chapters across the state, and we have been watching this city for quite some time, specifically this Fu Feng plant. I'm going to be as quick as I can because I know there's, this has been a long evening already. This is for you, by the way, Mr. Mayor. I'm not, I'm not going to throw it at you.
All right.
Um, just a quick introduction. Our organization is a nonprofit, 501(c)(4). We were founded by Gerald Borick from McGregor, North Dakota, and Tim Hoyer from Noonan. Just some down home, good old boys, ranchers, farmers. Gerald owns a multiple amount of businesses. He has a fertilizer company, a gun shop, and a bar, and he obviously started this group. Part of what his idea was, his plan, was he was sick and tired of listening to his community be defeated, act like they had no voice, much like your guys' community. We've been watching, we've been listening, we've been hearing. Your people are not happy with you. You're not listening to them. You're not even pretending to listen to them. You're overriding them. You're just letting them get lost in the hustle bustle, and that is making people agitated. There's nothing more frustrating than having your elected officials not listen to you. So the Sons of Liberty just wanted to make our presence known, wanted to let you guys know we are here, we are watching, and we are here to support every single one of these people. And we are here to help their voice get louder and stronger. And we are absolutely in opposition to this plant for a multitude of reasons. I'm sure you guys are sick of hearing everybody rattling things off to you about what they don't like about it. But I'm going to do it again, so bear with me. Bottom line, we do not want China's boots on our dirt. North Dakota is not for sale. Period. The end. We don't want to hand over the front door keys to our military, to our Air Force Base by allowing them to be the neighbors. It's common sense, guys. China's not our friend. They might trade with us, but they are not our friend. They don't like us. They don't care about us. They don't have us in our country, our state. They, we are not, our best interest is not in their hearts, in their minds. They don't care. As far as this plant goes, if they have sanctions or violations, how are you going to enforce them? What, what are the sanctions or the, what is going to be the repercussions to any violation? A monetary damage? Do you know how much money China has? It doesn't, that doesn't mean anything to them. Using these people's tax dollars to fund this infrastructure is ludicrous. Your people are mad. They just want a voice. They want you to listen to them. They want to be able to vote on this. Just put it to the public. All I wanted to do was make a formal introduction, so I've done that now. I hope that you guys will look us up, N D Sons of Liberty. You can find us on Facebook. You can find us online. Check us out, see what we're about, and just get ready to see a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coachman, I already called you, but I'd be willing to have you go again. Why don't you close us out tonight, sir?
All right. It's good to see everybody again tonight. One of the questions I have is, as you know, with the petition, all these different things, the opposition, people for it. One of the things I, I like to ask the city council, why don't you just vote to make this a vote for the people? Just say, you know what, we're going to go unanimous or six to one or whatever you want to have, and put it on the ballot. You have that authority? You have that power? Do it. It will eliminate everything. And people ask me when I'm on talk radio, says, well, what if they vote for it? The, the city of Grand Forks vote for it? They vote for it. Fu Feng come, then people get behind it. But it eliminates a lot of opposition for or against it if we just break it up the vote. Don't, don't cause the people to be angry. At least, at least when they get a piece of paper, they say yes or no, they're having a say. Give the people an opportunity. You right now can say, or in two weeks, if you want to have more people on and say, let's bring Fu Feng up to the people as a yes or no vote. You eliminate a lot of different issues. Speaking of issues, one of the things I think you're going to have, because you heard it with me earlier and with the young man back there, you're going to have, you got a conflict of interest. I don't know what this is going to do to your plans on how things are going to go forward. Because if you got a city attorney that has a conflict of interest, I don't know if it stops right here or it takes it all the way back to ground zero. Whatever it is, you need to decide what to do. Because as long as he's sitting on your council, you can't go forward when you already know there's conflict of interest. And once those things start coming out, what are you going to do? This whole thing stops. It's like a police officer who's dirty, and after three years, all those cases get thrown out. This is where, this is where you're at right now. So you need to make a decision. At least if you bring it up to a city vote or a county vote, because I believe it should be a county vote, because you're incorporating a county, at least you know where you stand. And all the people who want to get behind it can. But let the people speak on this. I know I heard before, it says, well, we're going to do this to every other thing? No. This is a major 800 million dollar project. Anything that's costing a lot of money, the people should have a voice on it. If it's a 50,000, 75,000, normal pay the bills, no, you don't need to vote on it. But something that is going to affect the people the rest of your life, they need to have a say. You know, if you're going to send your kid to someplace, you say, I'm paying for your school. Are you going to ask your kid? Well, it's a great school. But what do they want to do? Son, what do you want to do? Daughter, you want to do? You want to go to this law school? Well, I'm going to go to this art school. At least they have a say. All the people of Grand Forks and Grand Forks County want is to say yes or no. Give them that opportunity. Let us start here. Don't let us have to get another petition because we're going to start another petition. It's no biggie. But we don't want to do that. We want you, who represent as leaders, become leaders and not dictators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. Item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a question quick?
Sure.
Is, is Mr. Coachman, are you a member of the Sons of Liberty? Are you associated with them then?
No, I'm not a member of them.
And, oh, she's, she's left? She's not here anymore?
She is a member of the Sons of Liberty.
And, and this is the group that wants to go back to before the American Civil War?
No, you get the difference on that. You have to go N D Sons of Liberty.
Isn't this McGregor, North Dakota?
Yeah, it was McGregor, North Dakota.
Yeah, it's McGregor, North Dakota. Oh, this was a story, she suggested that we, we look it up. So this was a, a story from the...
Well, because I'm not a member.
The Tioga Tribune did a story on them. So, very good. That's all right. Thanks.
I, I, Sons of Liberty.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if you've got more comments and just do it in the council member comments. 7.1 vendor list, can I get a motion to approve the vendor list? So we got a motion, we have a second. Mr. Kamali, you're close. All right, we got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Vendor list is approved. Number eight, city council, or city administrator comments, Mr. Veen?
I'm going to defer my time to Mr. Gosted. We got a normal business item here from back in the pandemic days. So I'm going to ask Mr. Gosted to give you that.
If, if you recall, we, it was the Beacon Development, and under it, there's a Beacon Events, Inc. And we are to appoint, correct, we are to appoint three... Events, Inc., and we are to appoint, correct, we are to appoint three members as the Board of Directors. The city, the mayor is to nominate, and the council is to confirm the three members. The school district has three, the park district has one, and the developer has one. I just wanted to alert you that the developer has requested, because there's some tax-exempt provisions that need to be added to the Articles of Incorporation, and in order to do that, the Board of Directors has to approve it. So we need to start the process of appointing our three members to that Beacon Events, Inc. They won't do much, because the development, we, that manages, that oversees the management of the public space, so it's purely to get yourself appointed and do a, a nominal change to the Articles of Incorporation, and, but I wanted to alert the council that that will be coming forward in the near future.
Sounds good, and we'll get that, get that out there, advertise, and let people know. All right. We'll move on to mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigel, any comments this evening?
Just real quick there, just thank you for your comments regarding National Police Week and Officer Holtley, and I know law enforcement's greatly thankful for your support.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weber, your comments, please.
See you tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Kavami?
I just want to add to that, the Grand Forks, or the Northern Valley Law Enforcement Memorial project being constructed at Optimus Park is, if not already started, is, is starting shortly, and we will be having a dedication ceremony this fall, so just keep that on your radar. But as we're thinking about that this week, they are still accepting donations for operational needs, and construction is underway. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Veen?
Well, hearty talk tonight, so all I, I'd just add is I look forward to working with you, Mayor, and Todd, and others on the issues that we, we brought up tonight, and I appreciated the time to be able to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Guess that leaves me, just want to thank everybody for coming again. Oh, did we miss? Who did we miss? Shoot.
I'm done, I don't have anything else.
I didn't want Dana to ruin the night, so I was going to... President said, any comments?
I have no comments, thank you.
All right. Just want to thank everybody for coming, I really appreciate that, this is, this is how, this is how it should go. It's not pretty, it's tough, it's really tough at times, so. Thanks again. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Please.
Got a motion and a second? All right, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.